Everybody ready? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Laguna Nigal City Hall. Today is April 16th, which means that most of you have survived April 15th. So, good job on that. I may be a little bit worse for wear. I'm not going to admit or deny that. Welcome to your Laguna Nigal City Council Meeting. We have these meetings on the first and third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM now. I'll call the meeting to order. And at this time, I'd like to have Deputy City Clerk Lauer, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Jennings. Mayor, Mayor Mark James.
Here.
Mayor Protem Laurie Davis. Councilmember Elaine Janaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fred Miniger.
Present.
Councilmember Sandy Rains.
Present.
We have a call.
Great, thank you very much. As we do each time, I'd like to open tonight's meeting with an invocation by Chaplain Serena Cummins. She's from the Orange County Sheriff's Department. And after that, we're going to have Cub Scout Troop 771 come forward to leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would, please all rise.
Would you please join me in prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, it's a privilege to come before you corporately in prayer and to worship you individually as we choose. May we pause in recognition of that honor. As the City Council meeting begins here this evening, please fill this place with a spirit of cooperation, respect, wisdom, and efficiency. We thank you for the leadership that you have set in place to lead this city and for the members of the community that are also present here this evening. I pray specifically for the city's law enforcement officers and all first responders and ask for your hand of protection to be over each of them as they continue to serve and protect the city of Laguna Nigal. May your gratefulness, our gratefulness, and appreciation of one another be evident here this evening. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Cub Scout Pack 771, color guard advance. Please place your heart, your hand over your heart. Those in uniform and veterans, please salute. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Great, stay put and we'll be right down to say hi. Hey, that was awesome. Let's give them a hand. Fantastic. As always, do we have any extra scout leaders up here? We've got one, so it's good. Welcome. Just wanted to say thank you all. It's so important that we do this every City Council meeting and you all make it so special. I wanted to get a chance for you all to introduce yourselves to everybody. So if you would, I'll give you the microphone. You can tell us your name, what school you go to, and what grade you're in. And hold a flag at the same time.
My name is Jacob. I am in fourth grade and I go to Marion Ferguson Elementary School.
My name is Jose and I am in third grade and I go to Hidden Hills Elementary School.
My name is Aiden. I am in fifth grade and I go to Ocaso.
My name is Matthew. I'm in second grade and I go to Marion Ferguson Elementary School.
My name is Paige Krasowski and I'm in third grade and I go to Murgeson, Marion Ferguson Elementary School.
My name is Mr. Jason. I'm the Cub Master of Pack 771.
Thank you so much for being here. On behalf of the city, I want to make sure and give, Jason, I want to give you one of our 30th anniversary coins and just say thank you for all you do for this, for our Cub Scouts. Thank you so much. Do you guys mind if we get a picture? Is that okay? Okay, cool. Great, thank you very much. Paige, are you dismissing us too?
Color card dismissed.
Great job. Thank you so much. We are honored to have a presentation tonight, so I asked the City Council to stay here for just a moment. This presentation is a proclamation declaring April 22nd, 2019 is Earth Day. And I'd ask invite Monte McDivitt from the Laguna Nigal Botanical Preserve. If you would, please, Monte, come forward and let's present the proclamation. Welcome. Thank you. On a very great, on behalf of a very grateful City Council and the city, I want to present this proclamation to you. We've done this before and we are so proud of all that you all have done at the Botanical Preserve. So I want to present you with that and say thank you very much. And I have this feeling you might want to tell us about Earth Day. Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. I really appreciate this recognition for the Nigal Botanical Preserve. It is true, we're having our annual Earth Day event this weekend and it's only one that I can remember falling on the day before Easter. So in recognition of that, we have some nifty Easter eggs filled with succulents. We have some other plants for sale, herbs and other succulents and need to stop by and see what we have. But before you do that, we would love to help you or have you help us plant about 1,000 plants in the botanical garden. We're expecting about 150 volunteers on Saturday from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM. So we hope to see you there. Thank you. Awesome, Monte. Thank you so much. I told I want Monte to give me the dirtiest job they have. We want to get full mud on this one, so. Great, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Now, this is, I didn't tell you all about this. It's a little bit of a surprise. But as you know, we are celebrating our 30th anniversary. And one of the things that we're doing on the 30th anniversary is honoring our past. We're also celebrating our present and we are planning our future. You may have heard that now. I keep saying it a lot. So it turns out it's all on the signs up and down Crown Valley Parkway and all the other streets. But every now and then, somebody exemplifies that more than anybody ever could. And we're lucky tonight to have somebody in our audience tonight. And I wanted to invite her up if she would. And this is a surprise to her as well. Pat, if you would, please, join me in coming up. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of a grateful city. Thank you so much. Every now and then, there's these people that don't need introduction but seem to get them all the time. So I'm going to introduce you one more time. On behalf of those of you who got together for Measure O and created this wonderful place, and then on behalf of serving as our very first mayor, which seems so short time ago, and serving a long time in the Assembly, then serving eight years as our Board of Supervisors representative, and now have been in the State Senate, I can't imagine anybody that exemplifies this more than you do. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. On behalf of a grateful mayor, a grateful 67,000, can you believe now, residents here in Laguna Nigal, I wanted to say thank you. And it's very special to have you here. This is a plaque for you. And I also give you, I know you may have one of these, but you don't have one for me. So I'm giving you mine, so. Great, well, thank you. I just want to say thank you very much. And if you want, you can say a few words or.
Let me say a few words, very, very few words, but thank you so much. But it has been all of you, all of you. I see faces in our audience who've been with us from the very beginning when we started the community. Actually, my very first job here was Chairman of the Traffic and Safety Committee. But not before I served under Nancy Kurtz, who's out there, who was mothers, I think you were citizens for, say, for Crown Valley Parkway. I was worried about my children. I joined that group and look at me now, so here I am. But I think we all have given a piece of ourselves, our hearts, certainly our vision to this community, and that's why it's great. So it was my incredible honor to be able to be the first mayor, but I couldn't have done it without the hundreds of volunteers that stepped forward to say, "County of Orange, we are going to create our own community with our own goals and use our own taxpayer dollars for local control to make this the city that we want to live in, raise our family in, and hopefully have our grandchildren have a place to take it forward." So anyway, thanks so much. It is a total surprise, so you got me, John Mark. I know, I just came here as President of the Historical Society and look what you did. So anyway, my joy, absolute and incredible joy in my life.
Thank you so much. And just one last thing. We've all been, been wearing some new pins. And this is the 30th Anniversary City Seal Pin, and we'd love for you to have that as well and wear it proudly for us. Thank you. Great, thank you. Can we take a picture? Great, thank you. Let's give Pat a big hand. Thank you so much, Pat. And that's it, we're done. Great, well, thank you for that very much. Appreciate that. I wanted to do something, if there's no objection by my council colleagues, and let me know if there is. I wanted to pull a portion of council comments to the beginning because I have quite a few requests to speak for them here regarding homelessness issues. And before we make these people wait until the end, I thought that we might get that out ahead of time. And if you have any comments that you want to do, we can do that now too as well. So with that, I have a couple of comments that I just wanted to share with everyone, and I've written those down. For years, Laguna Nigal has been at the forefront of addressing homelessness, and I should say near homelessness, in our community. And that also includes our region. We have directly participated in solutions that benefit everyone involved. Those who've included provided direct benefit funds from our local nonprofit organizations, and they get those primarily through our community-developed block grant funds. We've also created a homelessness task force, which has brought together our nonprofits, our City Council, our senior staff, our police services, members of the faith-based organizations, and many others. And these other efforts have historically resulted in extremely low numbers of homeless people in our community. We have created a position of homelessness liaison with our police services that works with the people in need here in Laguna Nigal. As most everyone has heard, most, many of the cities in Orange County, and the county itself indeed, has been involved in extensive litigation over the past year in federal court. While Laguna Nigal has never been named to a party in that litigation, and we are not now, we have nonetheless participated in every court proceeding and hearing to which we were invited and have taken an active role in discussing regional solutions to these problems. While many of our neighboring cities chose not to participate for whatever reasons they may want, which is fine, Laguna Nigal was always there at the table for those discussions. I want to especially thank my council colleague, Councilmember Janaway, for her many efforts during those discussions while she was mayor, and I've certainly tried to pick up where she left off. You recall that we pushed back hard as a community when the Board of Supervisors voted to consider including a property adjacent to City Hall for a list of potential tent encampments. Your voice and that of your City Council led the Board of Supervisors to reconsider its vote and remove Laguna Nigal from such a list. Then, the Association of South County Mayors assembled to propose regional solutions for an emergency shelter in South Orange County. Those recommendations were ultimately not approved by the Board of Supervisors, but the group has since continued to meet and continue to work through possible solutions, and we have a meeting, just such a meeting later this week. Laguna Nigal has participated in every one of those discussions for a regional solution. Recently, a number of cities in South Orange County were named defendants in yet another lawsuit brought to address homeless issues in their communities. Laguna Nigal is not one of those cities. That said, when Judge Carter invited cities to attend a hearing regarding that litigation, I was there, right in the courtroom, just a few feet away from the judge, along with our city manager, Christine Ridge, to ensure that Laguna Nigal remained part of the regional discussion and, of course, the eventual solutions. I've known Judge Carter for many years in my time with the Federal Bar Association, and I have a very positive relationship with him and look upon him with great favor. As such, it's an honor to serve as your mayor during this time to use those relationships to represent Laguna Nigal as we work towards these meaningful solutions. I appreciate Judge Carter's efforts very much and I appreciate his commitment to our region. During our recent hearing, Judge Carter expressed real frustration with the failure of the state and the county and Costa Mesa particularly to open the Fairview Rehabilitation property located in Costa Mesa, which would indeed house those experiencing the most severe of mental illness. He was obviously frustrated with that facility, which is state-owned and has hundreds, if not thousands, of beds available not being used. The challenge, he challenged the courtroom, which was packed then with elected officials from all over Orange County and other interested parties from across the county to literally get Governor Newsom on the phone at that time and explain why it was that Fairview could not be opened. When it was learned that the governor happened to not be available, Judge Carter said in frustration that the federal government could fix this. And he mentioned that maybe a federal building would work and the words Laguna Nigal came up. To be clear, I truly have zero belief that Judge Carter has any actual desire and zero intent, let alone more, to actually involve Laguna Nigal in that process. It remains clear that his focus was squarely on Fairview property in Costa Mesa. What Judge Carter also said, with this as likely the last of his meetings with the parties for a while because he'd been serving as a settlement judge and had been having extensive conversations with almost everybody in that process. But now that there are new litigants there, he can't have those same types of ex-party communications with them unless they consent, and that certainly makes sense. So it looks like he'll be back to just being Judge Carter for a while and litigating the case until further developments come along. So we don't anticipate having another meeting for quite a while. So where does that leave us? It leaves us in the position of having done the right thing for many, many years, and that's exactly where we shall remain. We anticipate that the results of our upcoming point in time counts, which should be received all day, sorry, any day, will confirm that we have what is expected to be a very low number of homeless persons in Laguna Nigal. As I said, we know these people. We interact with them almost daily by offering assistance, and we treat them with the dignity and with the respect that all humans deserve. Just this past week, I met with a local nonprofit organization to continue developing strategies on these issues for Laguna Nigal and absolutely our region. I'm also working with the mayors of all South County cities on these issues. And finally, your City Council is committed to doing all that is necessary to help those in need and to do so with dignity and respect. We owe that same level of respect to the other 67,000 residents in Laguna Nigal and our businesses as well. To suggest otherwise is simply just not correct and creates a division where indeed none exists. I'm very proud of Laguna Nigal's efforts regionally and appreciate the support of our community in being a shining example of compassion through preparation. And I appreciate the time to, that you've allowed me to make those comments. I'd invite my council colleagues to see if they had anything else that they wanted to say with respect to that, with the homelessness issues. Mayor Protem Davies.
Thank you, Mayor, and I also want to thank you for doing that. That was fantastic. I want to tell you, being on this council since 2012, I'm so proud of the city and especially with our police services. We do have a low homeless count. One of the reasons is that we don't turn a blind eye on it. When we see something, we say something. Our police services address that person, they find out if they need services, and they move on. And when you have homeless that realize that we're here to help or that they can't just stay here, they tend to go other places. So we're doing the way, doing it the right way, and I commend you and your staff for that. Also, with AB 448, which is a trusting house, we have asked our city manager to be representative of city manager on the south spa, which I'm sure she'll continue to do so when she moves on there. Laguna Nigal is not a city that likes to be in the spotlight. We fly low under the radar, and there's a reason. Because you're, when we're doing that, we're strategizing. We don't need to strategize in front of everyone. And I think that we have smart, we've always been smart, stay out of lawsuits, and do what's best and watch what's best for, for the citizens. And I'm glad to see that people do see Facebook. Facebook is great to have questions and that. And I want to remind you too, we're here for you. We represent you. So when you have questions like this, I'm grateful that you come here. You can also pick up the phone, you can call. There isn't one of us that won't, you know, return your call and let you know the correct information and what's doing. And we, you know, we can't be out there and put everything out there at all times, and there's some things we don't want to put out there until things are taken care of. But do know that we are here to answer any questions you have on any issue so that we know that you're getting the correct facts, and then you can make a decision from there. So I thank you all for coming, greatly appreciate it. I thank our police services. I thank former Mayor Janaway, as well as our mayor now, and Christine Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Councilwoman Janaway?
Well, I'd like to echo the comments of Mayor Jennings and Mayor Protem Davies. I think they are the sentiments of most of us sitting up here, I know myself. I know last year, when this was thrust upon us kind of in a, in surprise fashion, your City Council took the action that was necessary. And we strategized, as Mayor Protem Davies has said, and we stayed under the radar. Because you know what? We've done things in Laguna Nigal for many, many years to prevent homeland homelessness. And that's the key to preventing homelessness before it happens. Because once someone becomes homeless, it compounds the issues, the resources that are needed to get them back to being housed. So in addition to the CDBG grants that we provide to our nonprofit partners that work with those residents who may be facing homelessness, we also allocate community service grants to them as well. And we do make many opportunities available through the city to let our residents know of ways to partner with these organizations. I know we've done that when we've had meetings with the different groups, the different nonprofits, to bring them together, to draw, to create an awareness. And I think this last year in particular, awareness was highlighted and created amongst all of our residents regarding what we are doing or what we can do to prevent homelessness. I know many of us have been engaged with the Housing Trust and the phone calls, the conference calls, from the very beginning. And that'll be coming up later on the agenda, but I know myself and Mayor Protem Davies were in on some of those initial meetings, posing the questions on behalf of our residents so that it could be refined and fine-tuned to what would be something that we would want to participate in. But I agree with the mayor. I continue to be bewildered and frustrated as to why Fairview has been, seems like it's taken off the table. And my concern is, that is an asset that the taxpayers of California have already paid for. Why is that not being used to address this issue? But your City Council continues to work on this. We continue to be engaged, and we are always here for you. So feel free to reach out to us via email, via phone, but we are always accessible to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Rains.
I just want to piggyback on everything they've said, but number one, homelessness is a direct result of a systemic problem. And preventing homelessness is really what we should be focusing on. We do have a crisis that we're taking care of, but in the meantime, we really are focusing on the prevention. And this council is focused on that for this city, and not just for our city, but regionally, and we hope to be a leader in that. So I just want everyone to be assured that that's where our focus is, is on preventing homelessness. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Anything else? Councilmember Miniger?
Not, just to repeat what my colleague said, this is a United City Council. We want to do the same. We want to do the right thing for the residents of Laguna Nigal. At the end of the... At the end of the day, as my colleague council member Elaine Jenaway mentioned, that I'm also very frustrated, number one, with the city of Costa Mesa, and number two, with the state of California, because the Fairview Development/Rehabilitation Center happens to be on Harbor Boulevard in the city of Costa Mesa. Its initial use has been, it was built for that purpose. It does have all the right accommodations. However, because the city council of Costa Mesa has taken that position that they don't want to see homeless people to be moving there, therefore, by default, the burden is going to be upon the South Orange County cities. So with all that said, not to repeat, we all want to do the right thing, and we are very united, like last year, when Judge Carter wanted to impose upon us because of the decision by the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we all showed up and we all protested, and at the end, we got what we wanted for the residents of this great city. Thank you.
Great, thank you, ma'am. I don't think there's anything further. Let's move on to public communications. Any person wishing to address the city council will need to complete and present a gold-colored Request to Speak form to the deputy city clerk. These forms are available at the counter, which is located at the back of the room, being demonstrated right now at the back of the room. Please be aware that the time limit will be three minutes for each of our persons, people to speak, and to allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have someone else read your written statement if you'd like. And Deputy City Clerk Lauer, I've got a number up here. Are there any additional requests to speak for?
No, we don't.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, let's go with the first one. So public communications now open. Our first speaker is Bill Terramina. Mr. Terramina, welcome to the dais.
Well, thank you. It's really great to be here.
If you would, please give us your name and address.
I will do that. My name is Bill Terramina. My address is 611 East Adele in Anaheim, California. When I look upon Senator Bates and this council, I can think of two words that describe you all: proactive leadership. It's really refreshing to be here in Laguna Niguel. I wanted to provide the city council with an update as to homelessness, based on what I've been perceiving, and how the issues in Orange County may or may not affect your city, based on what I've seen in the last two and a half years. I've personally been involved in building three emergency shelters in the city of Anaheim. In the last four months, via public-private partnerships, we've successfully built over 500 beds, and as a result, we have finally been able to manage our unmanaged homeless problem. We have our parks and our public places back for public use. They're safe again, and since we have the beds available, which is the key, we're able to enforce our anti-capping ordinances. We've also settled our ACLU lawsuit, which cost millions of dollars in legal fees, and we have been, and we're in the process of building 600 more beds in the pipeline in Anaheim. North Orange County sat on its hands for a while, and we're dealing with what you don't have here. You're all familiar with the shelter that was built in Santa Ana, with a capacity of 200 beds. It's nearly full, and almost 400 people, however, are still living across the street from the county hall of administration and a bus station. I think this is a shame, and it's a typical example of inaction by leadership. This is a problem that's manifesting and getting worse by the day. 600 more beds are planned there, however, there's no timeline for when they're going to be built. That's a county-run project. A little help is needed there. So where does all this leave Laguna Niguel, your city? You know, where do you stand in this? I too, Your Honor, attended the same hearing that you did, Mayor, and, you know, Judge Carter did mention the large parcel of federal land just down the street, and he said that that could be used for a shelter. But in that same sentence, as you said, he also mentions the Fairview Development Center in Costa Mesa. And to say the least, he excited the crowd. And as we both know, he's very, very talented at stirring up a crowd, especially a room full of elected officials that he invited into his house, if you will. And I can tell you, by what I know of him and my personal opinion, that no shelter of a regional basis will ever be built in this city. And, and there's, there's many reasons for that, but the recent statements were clearly meant to get the attention of the folks that were in the room, wherein if they didn't have proactive leadership and didn't take a step towards solving their own problem, a shelter would be imposed upon them. Well, that is not the case in Laguna Niguel. I say it again, it is not the case in your city. Your council mayor Jennings, Elaine, thank you for your past service as well in this area, your city management, you should be proud of the proactive approach that you've taken for decades, okay? You've been working with your faith base and your nonprofit organizations, and you've succeeded in sustaining and creating respectable solutions for the folks that are homeless. So that, my friends, is what a great city does, and that's what you've done. Keep up the good work. Congratulations.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Terramina. Our next speaker is David Salahey. Welcome, Mr. Salahey. Thank you for being here. If you could please state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is David Salahey. I'm a 20-year homeowner here in Laguna Niguel at 24341 Taponas Court. I was, and I appreciate the information you gave, you all gave about the preventive efforts that have been going on here. I'm not actually, in spite of my living here all this time, I'm not actually very familiar with those. I'd like to learn more at some future point through communications from the city, city hall. I'm also aware of the task force, and there was, unfortunately, there was no opportunity for public comment that was made available, as far as I'm aware. I did inquire about that, but the members of the public were not invited, as far as I know. I am aware that there was a brochure that was released at the end, but that's the only thing I'm aware of that was produced. I'd like to learn more about what that task force accomplished. Moving on to my prepared remarks, I'd like to say I do value the safety and quality of life we have here, but I'm also concerned about the health and safety of others, including the homeless. In recent years, real estate prices have risen while wages have mostly stagnated. Here in South Orange County, it's not uncommon for people to spend half their income on housing. At the same time, many jobs do not provide health insurance, and it may not be possible for a worker to avoid, afford rent, healthcare, food, a car, and all the other necessities of life. Someone who is strapped financially may be only one healthcare crisis away from becoming homeless, and once you are homeless, it becomes much more difficult to work and to find work. Have you ever tried to apply for a job without giving a resident's address? Have you ever tried to deal with basic grooming without having your own bathroom? Those who fear the homeless say that many drug users have brought the situation upon themselves. Meanwhile, Big Pharma has been aggressively pushing physicians to prescribe high dosages of opioids, which has resulted in the epidemic of addiction and overdoses that is plaguing our country. Not saying that substance abusers don't bear some of the blame for their addiction, but I do say that provide, providing assistance for those who want to quit is a better solution than abandoning them in the street. Then there are those who fear, fear the mentally ill, but the majority of people who are violent do not suffer from mental illness. The Canadian Mental Health Association says, "People with a mental illness are more likely to be the victims rather than the perpetrators of violence." Recent studies have shown that alcohol and substance abuse far outweigh mental illness in control, contributing to violence. Either way, the solution is not to stigmatize and ostracize people needing help. The best way forward from both a moral and financial perspective is to provide services to those who need them. Experience in other places such as Utah has shown that it actually costs less to provide housing first and wraparound services solutions than it does to pay for the emergency services that arise from neglect. Let us not close our eyes to the misery and misfortune of those around us. Most of us here in this room tonight have a family member or a friend or a colleague who has struggled with mental health issues or homelessness. In this wealthy county, in the wealthiest country of all, let us work toward providing humane solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I wanted to invite up our next speaker, Debbie Salahey? Or did he just say Salahi? I knew in my head it was one of the two, and I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you so much. If you would please just state your name and address.
My name is Debbie Salahey, and I've been a homeowner and residence of Laguna Niguel for 20 years. I'm at 24341 Taponas Court. And I'm, I'm thank, I thank you for what you've done so far. I was not aware of that. However, I'm very concerned that about 250 homeless people died in Orange County last year. I was just shocked to hear that. I'm even more concerned about the homeless that are mentally ill. There are home, they are, there are homeless people in South Orange County. According to the last count, there are at least 400 homeless people living in South Orange County. It's our responsibility to do something to help our fellow citizens. I understand that Judge Carter has suggested a parking lot by the Chet Hallifield, I'm trying to say that, federal building as possible location for mental illness treatment or shelter. My brother was, has suffered from mental illness since he was a teenager. Even though he's on social security disability, it would be impossible for him to live in Orange County without help from his family. He is very fortunate to have someone who purchases his medicine and gives him his medicine, cooks his food, and takes care of him. Even with this help, my mentally ill brother struggles coping with his disease. It is disturbing to imagine how he would fare if he ever became homeless. I'm very supportive of construction of both emergency shelter and permanent supportive housing for the mentally ill. I just think we need to do something to help them. I'm here tonight to ask you to support adopting Resolution Number 20191281 that would allow the city to participate in the Orange County Housing Trust through the city's execution of the Joint Powers Authority Agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate your words. Switching topics now, we are moving to the Honorable Martha McNicholas. Martha, thank you so much for being here. If you would please state your name and address for us.
Thank you, Mayor Jennings, Honorable Councilman. My name is Martha McNicholas. I am a 31-year resident at 23 Malibu in Laguna Niguel. I have two items to report to you tonight. One is with my Capistrana Unified School District hat on, and I want to thank you for supporting our robotics teams. It's a consent calendar item, number three, for supporting both our robot, robot dolphins from outer space and our next-gen robotic teams, both from Dana Hills and Malcolm Elementary. And I'd also like to introduce Eliana Avila. She is our head robot dolphin. She is president of the robotics team at Dana Hills High School.
Is she actually from outer space?
Well, well, yeah, and she's here for, only for a few minutes because she's got to get back and get the robot off to Houston for international competition. They leave tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning, so.
Best wishes tonight, yeah?
So I, again, I thank this council for supporting, and I'm particularly grateful because it supports the whole STEM education, and to see, especially see girls going into STEM is very, I love that, I love that a bit. The other part is, I'm going to take my CUSD hat off. Now I have my Relay for Life hat on, and I just want to remind you, save the date, September 14th. Okay, a couple of big things here. We are, as you remember, last year, we're not, not city by city, we're in the coastal communities now, which is Dana Point, Laguna Niguel, Elise, Oviedo, and San Clemente. Last year, the event was in San Clemente. We were a little sad about that. It's back in Laguna Niguel this year. We will be at the regional park. So we'll get more, and it's, we were last year in August, and now we're in September. So things are changing a little bit. We're still organizing it. We, we plan a big event, and we hope to see you all there, and I'll send you a writing, in writing, save the date for that, so you'll hear more about that. Thank you for your support in the past of that event as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. And Eliana, please extend our best wishes to the team, and good luck and safe travels. Thank you. Our next speaker is Clarence Wardock. Clarence, welcome to the podium. If you would please state your name and address for us.
My name is Clarence Wardock.
Wardock, how'd I do? Almost so close.
29791 Running Deer Lane.
Thank you.
Longtime, one-year resident of Laguna Niguel. This goes back to the homeless concern, and, you know, when I, when we closed on our house, two months after we moved in, it was all of a sudden, all the commotion with the property back here, and it's amazing that now, a year later, there's, you know, something else, and it's like, okay, am I going to get hit with this every 12 months? So you know, what, what is this? Because when we bought our house, there was no talk of anything like, like, hey, I'm in an isolated, quiet area, you know, what's the big deal?
Us too.
Yeah. So I guess, you know, your comments earlier really did make me feel personally better about the situation, and it is good, you know, you see your, your faces on printed literature, but to see you talk and, you know, to, you know, you can feel the passion and the legitimacy in what you have to say. So that's, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
I think my continued concern is that there seems to be a large percentage of, of the community outside of South Orange County that wants to distribute homeless people throughout the county, and I would like to know if we're faced with that situation, if we have a game plan or facilities in place, you know, to responsibly do something in the event that we are suddenly expected to house 200 people and not in the middle of a neighborhood.
Right. Appreciate that. One thing you might not have known, we can't comment on what you say because it's not on the agenda, but I do appreciate your public comments, and that means a lot, and I can assure you, I am allowed to tell you that yes, that's exactly what we're preparing for, and I don't think that's going to happen either, by the way, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our, our next speaker is John Pointer. Welcome, John.
Evening. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you. I'm just here to make an announcement to make you all aware that on May 19th, the American Legion's celebrating its 100th anniversary. I've provided flyers for each of you there, and would like to extend an invitation as well as anyone else in the audience. The celebration will also include a fundraiser, a raffle, and also a silent auction. Again, May 19th, 3 to 5 p.m., Salt Creek Wine Company, 30100 Town Center Drive, Laguna Niguel. You can go to the Laguna Niguel Post 281, L-N-Post, P-O-S-T, 281.com, and you will be able to purchase tickets at $35 apiece. We look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you. And again, there's plenty of wine at the wine tasting. We look forward to seeing you.
Great, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Helen DePany. Hello, welcome back to City Hall. Good to see you.
I want to thank you, Mayor Jennings, and our wonderful city council. Okay, my name is Helen DePany. I've been a resident proudly of Laguna Niguel since 1992, and I never cease to be amazed at how this city has been run, how efficiently, and the love that comes for the residents from our leaders. I appreciate that. Now, this is a little issue I just found out about, that there's a possibility of funding some kind of determination for the need of an additional dog park here in Laguna Niguel. Oh, okay, I know you can't.
This is us wanting to talk, and we can't.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm against that. It's, it's lovely that we already have a dog park here in Laguna Niguel, and I love animals. However, I don't own pets, and I believe the well-being and entertainment of pets is the responsibility of the pet's family, not the taxpayers. That's my statement and opinion. Thank you.
Helen, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming in tonight. Our next speaker is Roger Mouton. I was going to introduce you as bass player extraordinaire, Roger Mouton, but no pressure. If you would please state your name and address for us.
Long time no see.
Good to see you, sir.
John. Roger Mouton, 29592 Pelican Way. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I've lived here since 1971 or 1972, give or take a few, that's however your math is, it's 48, 49 years. Some of you may know my wife Patty. She has a speaking engagement tonight, so she's sent me.
So do you.
We understand that the council is considering whether to approve allocation of city funds in the amount of $38,000. in the amount of $38,000 for a feasibility study to determine if Laguna Nigal needs an additional dog park. We think we can save you the money by requesting you not do it. We don't think you need an additional dog park here. The existing dog park is not very user-friendly, and it's a bit of an embarrassment. The money that is proposed to be spent on this feasibility study was originally set aside as part of a plan for a park improvement, but that park would be a park that would be suitable for all ages, seniors especially. Let's stick with that plan and forego any unnecessary expense for a feasibility study. When and if the existing dog park is used to capacity and all other city priorities are satisfied, then look into the appropriateness of an additional dog park. Until then, we don't think you should spend our money, and we oppose the allocation of city funds for the dog park feasibility study and respectfully ask you to refrain from authorizing this expense. Thanks for the time.
You bet. Thank you, sir. Our last speaker tonight is Ajit Fend. Welcome to City Hall. Please state your name and address.
Yes, good evening. Ajit Fend, 29261 Country Hills Road in San Juan Capistrano.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Jennings, council members, Senator Bates, staff and community members. I'm here tonight to report on some of the work of our nonprofit organization, Orange County Human Relations, over the last year in the city of Laguna Nigal, and present you with copies of our annual report, which I believe have been distributed to each of you. At Orange County Human Relations, we believe that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence, so we provide programs to create safe and respectful communities. Our mission is to build understanding among our diverse residents, which is more important now than ever. We continue to see divisions and strife among leaders and neighbors locally and across our nation. That has not swayed us from our belief that we can work together and that we are better when we do. Orange County Human Relations partners with cities to manage challenging issues such as the lack of civil discourse, meaningful participation of all residents in the decision-making process, and overcoming mistrust that can make police-community encounters more dangerous for both parties. Cities and schools call on us regularly for help in community-building efforts as well as navigating conflicts. We hope that the city of Laguna Nigal will not hesitate to reach out to us at times when our expertise could help. Many of our programs are provided countywide and beyond. This year, our No Hate Public Awareness and Education Campaign will expand statewide and will include training and tools for cities, counties, and schools that would like to launch their own campaigns to prevent hate-motivated behavior, and we would welcome your participation too. I'd also like to share the following information about our programming exclusively in Laguna Nigal. We mediated 25 cases as well as one family mediation in the courts or community where one of the parties was a resident of the city of Laguna Nigal. In collaboration with Laguna Nigal Police, individuals and community groups, we also facilitated one police-community reconciliation case. We worked to build a sense of community among Laguna Nigal residents and staff through our continual hate crime education, victim outreach and support. And most recently, in the fall of 2018, we worked with students from Elisa Nigal High School and Santa Ana High School to help them resolve conflict and foster mutual understanding after a high school football game. The process was a great success, as you may have seen reported in the Orange County Register. In conclusion, Orange County Human Relations has appreciated your city's membership dues in our program that helps to bring police and diverse residents together, develop positive relations, address community conflict, and sustain a human relations infrastructure to serve cities when crisis situations occur. Together, we are contributing to a safe and respectful county and building the important relationships that can be called upon in times of tension and turmoil, should they come. And if the mayor could come forward, I want to make a presentation of a certificate to give to you in appreciation for the city's dues.
Well, that was really special, and I sincerely appreciate all HOC human relations does for our region. It's noted and appreciated, and I watched some of the events unfold at Elisa Nigal High School last year, and that was very helpful, and you were spot on, and it was greatly appreciated. So thank you again. I have two requests to speak for the Historical Commission, but I just want to make sure before I close public communications, I don't have any more on other non-agenda items.
No, we don't.
Great, thank you. So, public communication is closed. I would ask, is there any objection from the council if we advance the Historical Society Agenda Item? I know Senator Bates is here, and I know you weren't feeling well, and I didn't want to keep you all night long again, so is there any objection? Without objection, we will advance City Manager Agenda Item Number One to now, and that is a consideration of Laguna Nigal Historical Commission, and I believe Deputy City Manager Bell, you have a report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the February 5th City Council meeting, Councilmember Rains indicated that she and Councilmember Minigar would like to discuss the possible formation of a historical commission at a future meeting that Senator Bates could attend. We worked with Senator Bates' office, and she is here this evening. This staff report has been prepared to provide City Council with information on neighboring communities with similar commissions in place and the roles and responsibilities of those commissions. Further, it also provides information on state and county resources in the area of historic preservation. Staff is seeking further direction on the exact roles and responsibilities that the City Council is interested in achieving with the establishment of any type of a committee or a commission. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any questions for staff before we get into? Got a couple of requests to speak for them, so let's, let's open public communications on that then. And the first speaker is Senator Patricia Bates.
Welcome.
Well, thank you, thank you, and please excuse my voice, it sounds worse than I feel, I assure you. Getting better. But I do appreciate the opportunity to come this evening and update you on the activities of your Laguna Nigal Historical Society, a little different than what you're potentially contemplating here as the Agenda Item set out. For the record, I'll get my name on the record, I'm Pat Bates. I serve as President of the Historical Society, and with me this evening, and they will make a very brief presentation, are Nancy Kurtz, who is our co-chair of the Archives Committee, and Paul Whitlock, who's the Chair of our Education Committee. As you noted in your Agenda, the society was incorporated in 2010. We currently have 12 members on our Board of Directors, and we have about 70 general membership members as of our last meeting, so we had picked up some more members. We have a website, which in addition to photos and activities and the opportunity to join a membership application, it provides our mission and goal statement, which is essentially to preserve the past, enrich the present, and promote the future, not unlike Mayor Jennings.
That sounds very familiar.
Yeah, we share that, you know, that commonality there.
Great minds.
To accomplish our goals, we have held a number of fundraising activities over the past nine years, and the bulk of our proceeds have really gone to fund two of our primary activities, which honor our mission and our goals, archiving and education. To preserve the past, we established a committee to begin archiving memorabilia in various documents, photos, et cetera. We initiated an oral history project, which we've tried to encourage some of you to come forward and share your Laguna Nigal story. To date, we have invested approximately $3,500, a little more than that actually, in equipment to catalog and preserve those documents and photos, and we also maintain a storage unit to house those valuable documents. To bring the past into the present and the future focus, we established an education committee, which through excellent outreach and presentation to the Orange, to the Capistrano Unified School District Board of Education, we were approved to develop and present a history lesson on the history of Laguna Nigal to third-grade classes in our city's elementary schools. I would now like to ask Nancy Kurtz, our Archives Co-Chair, to provide a few comments, and she will be followed by Paul Whitlock, our Education Chair, who will give a very brief update on our third-grade elementary school, and then I will close with, you know, activities and how we might see a partnership, depending on how you all decide on how you want to relate to the society from the city. So first is Nancy, are you, you're here with us? I'll give you Nancy.
Thank you. Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you.
Good evening. Nancy Kurtz, 29135 Abbott St. Street in Laguna Nigal, of course. Mr. Mayor and council members, the Laguna Nigal Historical Society Archives Committee is charged, as Pat said, with overseeing the collection of artifacts acquired from a variety of sources. These artifacts include documents, books, photos, articles, and objects, all relating to the story of Laguna Nigal. They have been donated by the city of Laguna Nigal, organizations such as the Laguna Nigal Women's Club, local businesses, and individual residents. The Archives Committee consists of about seven members, who over the years have completed or accomplished the following tasks. Some of these have already been mentioned, but I'd just like to repeat them. We have obtained the tools needed to catalog the acquisitions, computers, museum software, printer, camera, file cabinets, archival preservation supplies, and so forth. We have accepted donated items such as the Molton family cradle, early-wall-sized aerial photos of Laguna Nigal, Cityhood Drive posters, developer brochures and maps, and photos of the early days taken by longtime residents. We have prepared displays to recognize significant groups and events in the community, such as the Laguna Nigal Library Display honoring the Laguna Nigal Women's Club's origins and activities, and the City Hall Display celebrating the city's 25th anniversary. We have initiated an oral interview program of individuals who have made a significant contribution to Laguna Nigal's history. We have supported and participated in a public Orange County Stories Program in cooperation with the Orange County Library, and we have enhanced the Laguna Nigal High School, High School, sorry, Laguna Nigal Historical Society website to include early Laguna Nigal photos. Most of the Archives Committee work has taken place out of a trailer in Elisa Wood Canyon Wilderness Park. The Laguna Nigal Historical Society is grateful to the Orange Coast Watershed Environmental Center Organization for allowing us to use this facility that we share with the Laguna Nigal Military Support Committee and one or two other organizations. Over the last few years, access to that facility has been limited due to multiple park construction projects. In addition, there is no internet capability at the site, which precludes the ability to do historical research. Being concerned about the conditions at the trailer, the society has moved a portion of the collection to a rented climate-controlled storage facility. For all of these reasons, the progress of the Archives Committee has slowed considerably in recent times. The Archives Committee looks forward to a time when the Laguna Nigal Historical Society has a more usable home, a facility where we can carry out the charge to catalog and preserve the history of Laguna Nigal, where we can establish a museum setting for the public to view and learn more about the history of our community, as well as participate in historical activities, and where individuals can research a variety of local topics with assistance from trained Laguna Nigal Historical Society members. And I'll pass this on to Paul.
Great, thank you so much, Nancy. Welcome, Paul. Thank you, as always. I don't have a yellow slip for you, but if you would be so kind to fill one out before you take off and just give it to one of you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Whitlock, been a resident of this community, my wife and I, since 1970, and I'm a member of the Laguna Nigal Historical Society, the Education Chair, along with my committee member, Carol Allen. And what I'm speaking about here today, all of you know about, but we're gone now. Senator Bates wanted me to speak about it. When we started the Historical Society about eight years ago, we established an education committee, and we wanted to know what we could do for the students in Laguna Nigal. And Carol Allen, who was teaching in our school district at that time, had always, was always concerned about the fact that in the third grade, that there was California history, and the kids got U.S. history, but they never got our local history. And so she developed a program that covered the history of Laguna Nigal, and it was put together in a coloring book that the teachers could present to the students at the end of the year after the testing was over and it was downtime, and it was a fun learning activity. And it took your city seal up there, and it had a coloring page for each symbol on the city seal, and each symbol on the city seal tells the story of Laguna Nigal. And in one day, the students could go through all of these pages with a symbol on each page, and at the end of the day, they had colored in a symbol like that, and they could take this home to their parents and tell them about the history of Laguna Nigal. That could be done in one day. This was the teacher's manual that Carol developed also, and this teaches across the curriculum so that not only do you cover history, but you cover history in English, and history in math, and history in science. So the teacher can take this, and it can be a week-long project, if they want it to be. All right, we started out seven years ago, and we had seven public schools. We added on subsequently up to this year, five private schools. We now have, since we lost one public, public school, we now have 11 total schools, starting in 2017, and that expense to our society started out at about $600 a year. And for about the first four years, we paid for it ourselves out of money that we raised. The next two years, Anna Bryson, one of our ex-school board members financed those two years, and then this last year, your city thanked you to your city council, picked up the expenses. Now, those expenses have gone from $600 a year to up to the number of people that we're serving now, to $1,100 is the last we paid for this past year, and your city council picked that up. We would be very pleased if you would consider doing that in the future. In addition to that, because of money that we have raised, we have elementary school grants to six different schools, 23 different teachers, at about $75 apiece. That doesn't seem like a lot, but for a teacher that's spending their own money to buy school supplies, that's $75 that they can spend on materials that teach history in the schools. We also have worked with Councilwoman Genoise, Laguna Nigal Junior Civic Workshop for the past three years, and she teaches the students about the history of their government, and one of the sessions talks about city government. And we use this symbol up here, and we quickly show them, we give them a booklet, and we quickly show them the history of each symbol, the same as we do with the third graders, only we upgraded it a little bit, of course, because this is the junior high kids. We've done that for the last three years. That's approximately $100 a year, and the past two, three years, Anna Bryson has financed that also. We also had, after our 25 years, a gala where we raised some money, and with money that we raised from that, we donated $2,500 to three high school students that were going to major... that were going to major in history. And that was not $25 apiece, we only had 25. That was $900 apiece that we were able to do. So we appreciate the support that you've given us, not only financially, but emotionally in what we've been able to do for this city. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much, Paul.
Well, in closing, let me just add another, you know, huge shout-out to the council for walking the walk with us over the many years. Without the gala, that was really exciting, and I believe we still have the video of that, which took us up to the first 25, and I know another five added on to that. I think that that very video is certainly a representation, a historical document, if you will, that needs to be preserved and added on to yearly. Partnership with the city, how do we accomplish that? That will be up to you, and I'm asking for a stronger partnership. I think when we have a city seal alongside of our logo, it means a lot to our community in terms of giving us some, let's say, a little more labor to help with the different activities that we do. And I've seen that that has been a very positive thing with the Military Support Committee. So to simply having a member or two members of the council as liaisons to the Historical Society, that would be the simplest thing, almost an advisory committee, to something short of a commission. There's been a lot of controversy. This goes back to my discussions with Tim Casey, who was concerned with the commission title to some of this. It might reach beyond what we intended to do as a society, and I made it very clear that would be something I believe has to come from the city council, if they really wanted to go the route of a commission. And I know you have that covered on the agenda, but that obviously is going to be the decision of our community leaders, all of you. What we're asking for is just strengthening the partnership. We believe it will help us, certainly you've helped us greatly financially, but we really have reached a new level where we are going to have to have more engagement, because we have now accumulated some very significant materials that with, I'd say, our fundraising, we're going to be partnering with you in July is the carnival, and then hopefully towards the end of the year. But we, we will need help in expanding our fundraising abilities so that we can finance some of these things that are very important to preservation. In terms of the education, I think that goes along Mayor Jennings with, with our idea. You need to enrich the present by focusing people on what they have and protecting it for those who will follow. And I think that's been one of the reasons our Education Committee was such a centerpiece of our present focus, and certainly with our young children, focusing them on today and then tomorrow, the kind of leadership they'll bring to our community, very important. And you encourage and inspire, as you know, like we all have been, in terms of our path to leadership, by those who came before us. So we hope there will be a great partnership, and when you all have time to decide through your discussion tonight, we're open to more discussion in how we might structure that, what is something you'd like to do, and we're certainly open to that. We want to make sure that we respect our bylaws and certainly our financial issues. We have to keep those quite separate, as you would know. I'm sure the Military Support Committee has something like, we are a 501(c)(3), so, and we are not yet audited by IRS, but I'll share with you, when I was PTA Finance Chairman, many, many years ago, my child was in kindergarten, I'm not kidding you, our budget was $5,000, and the IRS audited us. And we had to show every little piece of paper, napkins where people wrote, "I bought 20 goldfish for $5." We had, you know, things, so we had to reimburse that. So you never know, but we have, fortunately, the pro bono contribution of former mayor Gary Capata, who does our taxes for us. We have a great secretary in Sher Albert does everything, but Betsy Sater, and we all know Betsy, she's an incredible community volunteer, and she does certainly our regular finance, because we lost our wonderful treasurer, Jerry McCloskey, and I know that was, you know, a loss to all of us. In fact, we've had, Jeanette Crumbus was one of our founders, lost some really great people who were very instrumental in pushing us up and out and on the way. So any help that you all decide is legitimate and can partner with us in a stronger way, we are certainly open to that engagement, and we hope that will be the outcome of, you know, this 30th anniversary. What a, what a great present to us, and certainly we hope we are viewed as a great present to you all. Thank you.
Senator, thank you so much. My, you know, I'm a history buff, I love history, I love that the Historical Society exists and all the things that it does, and the more I learn, the more I'm intrigued by it, and so I appreciate you all bringing that here. Also want to give a quick thank you to staff for the staff report of all the possibilities that can come with something historical related, either a commission, committee, whatever it might be. And I really appreciate the presentation tonight, which I think in my mind helped focus what is possible, and my mind was spinning in six different directions about what you might be asking for, and that really helped, by the way. So thank you very much, and I appreciate the thought that you put into it. I want to give the council an opportunity to talk. Just my initial reaction was that I agree with you, that, maybe I'm agreeing with Tim Casey as well from back in the day, that additional Brown Act committees create something that they might not be intended to do. I think that would interfere with your 501(c)(3) efforts. I want to make sure that we preserve those, because I view those as important to any organization. And I, I know that with our, our economic development team and all the things that we're doing here in town, and the city manager's role, that we should absolutely have a liaison, a permanent liaison to the Historical Society, and that can come in many forms. And heck, we can also be members, too. So that, that connection, I think, is inseparable, and we can decide how we want to formalize that or not. Some initial impressions are quite favorable, and I appreciate you, all of you, bringing that to our attention. Let me go around the room, I know that we asked, this was asked to be placed on the agenda by Councilmember Minigar and Councilwoman Raines. I want to give them first shot if either of them have something they want to say. Councilmember Minigar, go ahead.
Just a couple of items. The only way that we are able to preserve the past of this great, beautiful, remarkable city would be via creation of a committee or commission. At this juncture, I can go in any direction. I'm not picky with regard to the title, committee or commission. They are interchangeable, it depends on how legally we define it. But we, as a city, we, as a municipal corporation in this great state, have reached to a point that we ought to establish a committee/commission like that. When I look at Ciudad Mission Viejo, they have one, San Clemente, and other South County cities. And this is a wealthy city, this is an affluent city with a rich culture. From a fiscal perspective, budgetary perspective, I don't think that allocation of $1,130 a year to create this committee or commission would be causing any, any financial constraint on this wealthy city. So budget is not my issue, my concern. The bottom line is, in the interest of time, as we were told, that the Historical Society has had a difficult time with regard to having, you know, a permanent place to archive, to deposit a lot of good artifacts, and a lot of other literatures or other documents that they have for this city. And I want to make sure the future generation, our kids, would be able to refer back to it in a shape or form that we deserve to be. We say, I, I for one, anywhere I go in this great state, 484 cities, 58 counties, I always call our city as a first-class city. So I think what is missing from the whole picture would be creation of this committee or commission. Thank you.
Councilwoman Raines.
Thank you so much, Mayor Jennings. This is something that I spoke with Councilmember Minigar about, but also have had a deep desire to see that moves forward in our city, whether we call it a committee or commission. And there's, after tonight's presentation, the two key things that we talked about was archiving and education. Those, education is so critical and important to all of us in our community, from our youth all the way to our seniors. We're always being educated. And what the, what the society has done has, has really just touched the surface of what could happen in the future with our city. The other part about the archiving, as we're growing as a community, and as we've now looking at opening a civic center at the end of this year, beginning of next year, we have property that should be able to house our archives, whether it's, you know, a location where people can come and enjoy and visit and see different archives, where the displays can be done on a rotating basis. This is an opportunity for everybody, not just in Laguna Niguel, but visitors of Laguna Niguel, to understand the rich history and culture of what Laguna Niguel is all about, where we came from, and how we want to move forward in the future. So for me, it's apparent that the society was started by some key members of our community, some have already passed. And that's unfortunate thing with history, is as we're trying to preserve history, sometimes the best preservers of it pass along, and then we don't have anyone. So our city being involved in it basically solidifies that for me. It makes sure that the future committee of the council or committee members continue to keep that and foster the relationship with the Historical Society so we can continue to move forward. So for that reason, I really feel it's important that we look at moving forward with forming some type of a committee. Yes, it will cost money, and yes, it will create some paperwork and things that we have to deal with, but I think this is the right time as we celebrate our 30 years and look forward to the future.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Jenway.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Senator Bates and members of the Historical Society for being here. My family's been a member since the beginning, and we see the important work that you do, and preserving our history is so important. The time to recognize and document the sites, the resources, the actions, and all the activities that have contributed to a city's history should be done before that is lost. And because of the youth of our city, we're only going to be 30, but we have been a community for much longer, but because of that, we have a unique opportunity to take action now to make sure all of that is preserved. When we became a city 30 years ago, it was for local control, and, and a number of other principles have guided us through these 30 years of cityhood. And, you know, when I've talked to the potential developers for any of the property outside of City Hall, a place for the Historical Society has always been part of that discussion, and I will continue to keep it as part of that discussion, because the history of our city is very important. But in addition to local control, I believe we've also had the principles of small government. So as Tim Casey or as Senator Bates alluded to, creating another commission or committee expands government. And I don't know that that's a principle that we, we would adhere to, and I think there's another way to go about this. And I do want to give the Historical Society all of the esteem and importance it is due, because it is rightly due that. But I think there's another way to go about it. And we have relationships with other organizations that are quasi-city entities that do great work, and the city is a partner with them. And I'm specifically referring to the Chamber of Commerce and the Niguel Botanical Preserve. Because what would happen if it were to become, if the Historical Society would become a city committee such as military support, then they would lose their autonomy. They would lose the flexibility of how they operate, because the members of that board would be appointed by the city council, and you would be needing to be doing publicly posted agendas, and so on and so forth. So it's not that, it's not a budgetary issue, it's an issue of how can the Historical Society operate? And I think the autonomy that they have with the members being able to get together is of great benefit for them. So I would like to see this relationship take the model of more like the Chamber of Commerce, where we, I am not opposed to providing funding for the Historical Society, and we should be paying for the, the educational materials that are provided to the students. And that's why last year I brought it forward to our city manager to see that we could pay for that. But I think that, I just don't want it, see it confined by becoming a city commission, and then we're all creating more government, because that's, that's a, that's a, that's a foundation of, of my values, is keep government as small as possible. But also, I think the Historical Society would lose some of the benefits of their autonomy. So if we could create a relationship, and maybe staff could come back to us with some model of that, something like the relationship we have with the Chamber of Commerce, which I think we would be able to accomplish the goals we want to, and not restrict the activities of the Historical Society. I also think maybe with all of our 30th anniversaries coming up, a formal resolution declaring the Laguna Niguel Historical Society as our official Historical Society, and maybe gain, you know, gain some fanfare and attention at some of our public events would maybe add to what we're trying to do. Some of the activities that were mentioned in the staff report regarding building sites and areas within our city, I think that should be in the purview of our Director of Community Development. And maybe if the Historical Society had an architectural liaison who maybe met with our Director of Community Development on maybe a quarterly or semi-annual basis, to see, you know, what sites or what areas would we designate in the city as being historical. So those are things I would like to see staff come back to us with, but I would prefer a model, a relationship modeled more after the Chamber of Commerce rather than the city commission or committee. It's not an issue of funding, but it's an issue of keeping government small and the autonomy of the Historical Society, and how its members and wonderful volunteers can operate. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Mayor Protim Davies.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone that doesn't think one or two people can make a difference, don't know the residents of Laguna Niguel. Sitting there listening, I remember when you first brought out the educational for the third graders, unbelievable that you took the time to do that. I mean, that's going to stay with our students forever, and I, and I thank you, and Carol Allen, I thank you so much as well for all the efforts and time you've put in there. I want to thank, obviously, Senator Bates, and all of those that have put their time and effort into this Historical Society. It's a lot of work, and like you said, we're 30 years now, it's time. It's time for us, I think, as a city, to step up our game. It's time to make sure that, you know, we've got history that we can share. And I know one of the concerns is location, and finding a right site. That's something we have been looking at, whether it might be our brand-new community building that will be opening up in less than a year, our civic area that we're going to have behind here, when that is built hopefully in about three years. But it's a priority, it's a priority for us to make sure you have a place to store it, as well as show it. So whatever we can do, I think, you know, come to us, and we'll work together on that. Also, I believe, as well as, you know, local control, and I think that staying away from commission is important. It would take away your nonprofit authority to be able to get more donations, I believe. Also, a lot of these items that the staff put together, which I appreciate, are planning commission handles as well. We do have a task force for the homeless, we have an advisory, which is our city manager at this point. Perhaps we could do something like that, as you were talking, as well, and have our community development director be the advisory, whether they can go and meet, like, again, whether it's quarterly, or, you know, yearly, whatever it may be. But I think that would be great. We also have a new library that's going to be being built as well, and it's going to have a different function to it. So that might be a place for us to look. But I do believe that we need to find a place sooner than later for you on this. So I would recommend that we stay away from a commission. We don't want anything overreaching there as well. Go with perhaps a task force liaison, or an adversary, there we go, advisory committee, and go with that. I think that's the best way to go at this point. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. I think without question, it's time to improve and enhance our relationship with the Laguna Niguel Historical Society. They play a critical role, and that's only going to get more and more critical, as we've heard. Then bearing the full brunt of the costs associated with that, to basically store things that are important to us, I think is something that is, something we can definitely fix, and something we can definitely handle. And I will leave to staff the best way to bring that back to us through our budget process, and let us know how we can allocate those type of funds. And there are some machinations that go along with us donating the 501(c)(3)'s, and we'll want to make sure that we do that. We want to make sure that the needs are there and that they're We want to make sure that the needs are there and that they're enhanced. And we've heard a couple of echoes of possibility and I share those as well. There's a whole lot more to that that's being discussed and as Councilwoman Jenaway mentioned, they're always in the room. We're always talking about trying to find a way to showcase these materials and parts of our history and either through a permanent exhibit or a rotating exhibit or something. And I think that's, it's very important. I mean, it's historically interesting, it's culturally significant, and it's just who we are as a city and I think that's the right thing to do. It's also without question that there seems to be a consensus that something needs to happen here, so I don't know that we need to have a vote necessarily, but the staff has been taking notes, I gather, on everything we've been talking about. And if it's not, it's conveniently recorded on videotape for them. We will allow them to peruse through this and see what they can come back to us with. I think I agree with the comments of Councilwoman Jenaway and the Mayor Protim. You know, formalizing something inside the government house is not always the best way to fix it. And if there's any city on the planet that shows that our nonprofits and our outside entities can do what government never should be doing, it's got to be Laguna Niguel. And we rely on them to do the right thing every time and we want to park alongside you, give you the benefit of resources, manpower and momentum, but let you go and do the thing that you do so well, that you're committed to and the organization was founded for. So that's where my heart is and I think that I've heard that from almost everyone up here in varying forms. So unless the staff tells me we need to keep talking on this, I think they've got enough notes, is that right?
Thank you, Mayor. This discussion has been extremely valuable to us. At first, we weren't quite sure what you were pursuing, so your comment and the wise words from Senator Bates definitely helps us. I see a couple of different themes here so we can pull this together and bring it back to you and maybe provide you a couple of different options to consider at a future meeting.
Great, thank you very much. I didn't say, and I do want to make sure that I do, I do agree that most of the design review and all of those things that were talked about in the staff report are completely within the purview of our planning commission. Many cities don't have one that's as robust as ours as a master plan community and we do, but that doesn't stop anybody from participating in that process. And if we need permanent liaisons from the Historical Society to that, that want to comment on design review, they're more than welcome to do that, they certainly can. So formalizing that again, I think might interfere with the normal functions of government and I encourage us to come up with a different system. So with that, we don't need to have a vote, so unless there's further comments, we will move on. Great, thank you. All right, and thank you very much, Senator, and thank you for all your team and for the Historical Society. I can't wait to see all the stuff in storage, by the way. Got to come over. We have to back up in our agenda a little bit and go back to the consent calendar. If you give me one moment to reset, I'll pull that up. Our consent calendar contains items one through nine and I want to check now and see if there's any that need to be pulled for either discussion or comment. And I'll start to my left, Councilmember Menegar. Nothing?
I'd like to pull item number six, the analysis of the law enforcement contract, and item number nine, professional services agreement for the Pooch Park.
And Mayor Protim?
Number four.
Number four. Okay. With that, I would entertain.
I make a motion to move.
And that is, the motion's made by Councilmember Menegar, seconded by Mayor Protim Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carries unanimously and I should take a pause after that vote to make sure that we thank and welcome Bob Hall as our new interim city manager. We just voted him in on that, with that vote and as a council, we are extraordinarily glad that you're coming. I know that he wishes he could be here tonight. He had a family obligation he had to take care of and we certainly encouraged him to do that, but Laguna Niguel will be in tremendous hands as we look forward towards finding a permanent city manager in the upcoming months. So thank you for that. I guess we'll go in numerical order, starting with number four, which is the update to the city council policies and procedures. That was pulled by Councilwoman Rains. The floor is yours.
Just a couple items. The first one is under the policies and procedures for our pylon signs at the gateway specific on 2.2 and this is, it discusses the assessment of the future signs and who will, how the assessment will be done for, who can put signage up there. I know there are certain ones that have already put signage up there, so I just wanted to clarify on that and I think that would be our community development director, how that process will be assessed and how you'll determine who gets signage moving forward.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and council. To Councilmember Rains' question, the assessment that is referenced under, I believe it's section G, it is, that is a staff process primarily, we would be depending on the criteria for, described in subsection C, which speaks to signage that is, or businesses that are conforming to the gateway specific plan vision, also taking into account tax revenue generation, uses that are of public or regional interest, that would be another criteria, and lastly, businesses that would benefit significantly from freeway oriented signage. So at this time, we do not have a waiting list, but if we did have competing businesses every couple of years, we would be assessing that and based on that criteria, we would be selecting which businesses would be identified on city signage.
And would that be just something you would decide on or would you bring that to us at council or is that just part of the policy that you'll be doing?
The way the policy is written, it would be the community development department's discretion.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And then I know that in the beginning, it talks about how we don't have a policy, the one policy that's excluded is for our fees based and how we'll be using all of our facilities moving forward in the city. And I'm not sure if the civic center is included in that, but I would like to make sure that our civic center is included in that even though it's not completed yet. I do think that as we're writing policies for fees and facility, for the facilities in our city, that we should include that. So if, and hopefully that would be something that we could have listed on our website so residents who were interested in any of the facilities could see what the policies are at that point after it's been brought to us, so.
Absolutely, and thank you Councilmember Rains for pointing that out. It's a large chunk that's missing in your city council policies and that is the facility use policies. We are taking a comprehensive look at those in anticipation of the new community center and you'll probably be getting a budget request from our parks and rec director to bring in a consultant to take a look at all of our amenities, including our buildings and our sports fields and our courts and making sure that we have equitable policies across the board regarding the use and the rental agreements and what fees we're charging for all of them.
Perfect, thank you so much. With that, I'll move for item four.
Great.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilwoman Rains, seconded by Councilwoman Jenaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously, so thank you very much. Number four is approved. The next one is number six, which is pulled by Councilwoman Jenaway, which is analysis of the contract law enforcement services costs and methodology for contract cities, the Matrix Consulting Group financial report. Catchy name.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor. I know this is something that we've been waiting for quite a while. And I have a question for Chief McDaniel, but you don't have to answer it tonight. Okay. As we look through the costs, you know, ours, our per capita cost is among the lowest in the county even though as a city, we have added deputies and other cities have reduced their number of deputies. So thank you for your great management of our law enforcement team. One question that I do have is I noticed that our city is quite often compared to Yorba Linda as being a very similar city to ours, both in terms of size and the community composition and quality of life. And their per capita cost is about $34 lower than ours. So if you could please just take a look at why that is and if it's something that we would even want to consider and then let us know if it is. Because I don't know what the answer is, I don't expect you to have it right now, but you may know, you used to work there.
I don't mind answering. I have a pretty good idea and thought of what most of that is and that is traffic enforcement or traffic related enforcement. They have three motor positions, we have six. They have two community services officers which do the traffic investigation and parking enforcement, we have four. We have two DUI cars, they don't have any. And we have half of a commercial enforcement deputy, which they do not have any. So that's five and a half extra positions that we have and if you can do that math, that's a great majority of that difference.
That's a bargain for $34 a person for five positions.
I would agree with you and as you know, we had some issues with traffic safety a few years back and with your leadership, et cetera. We've done fantastic. We are about six to one in traffic enforcement compared to Yorba Linda, so you are getting bang for your buck. It is making a difference and I would say that's a majority of what that cost difference is.
Okay, and it was with intention that we added those positions for the safety of our residents, so thank you, Chief. And with that, I move the item.
I just wanted to make a comment and maybe ask a question to Chief. Yorba Linda's not really a pass-through community. I mean, it sits next to a freeway, but we are absolutely, we have two primary thoroughfares that go right through the middle of our city that access other freeways. And so I'm assuming that the differences in the traffic is primarily related to that.
That is a huge part of it. Having worked in the city of Yorba Linda as a sergeant there, their roads are not as wide, it's not as, there are more stoplights, you know, so folks have a tremendous amount of speed that they can build up here unfortunately in the city. It is a pass-through city. Any resident getting off the five freeway, going to Dana Point or Laguna Beach is often driving through our city, so that is part of it as well. So yes, there is a big difference in that regard.
So our chief of police is on record as saying that we are more awesome, is that right? I shall make sure we got the record clear.
Well, we're remarkable.
And remarkable, there we go. So it's moved by Councilwoman Jenaway, is there a second? Seconded by Mayor Protim Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed, passes unanimously. And thank you all for that and thank you for everyone who participated in that analysis. It's, you are right, it's been a long time coming and it was fascinating information to read and there it is. The next and last on the consent calendar is item number nine, which, I was going to read the long title, you called it the Pooch Park, we'll go with that.
Yeah, let's just go with the Pooch Park. Okay, so item number nine, I have a question actually for city manager Ridge. So back in February, the council approved redirecting funds from the outdoor fitness park design towards the study for the Pooch Park. And my question for you is because it looks like with this professional services agreement that some of those funds from the outdoor fitness park may be used. So can you confirm when the funds are used, will the funds for the Pooch Park renovation project account be used before any of the funds from the outdoor fitness area? And because sometimes we have seen contracts come in under and so we want to make sure, I mean, because the outdoor fitness area, that design was never finished, so we might need some of those funds to complete that work. So I want to make sure that it does come from the Pooch Park renovation project first and that no more than $29,600 would come out of the outdoor fitness if needed.
Certainly, Councilmember Jenaway. My understanding is what you approved and allowed us to do based on your action taken in early February was to conduct the concept design and the construction estimate for the existing dog park and then do a needs assessment and a feasibility study if a second dog park is warranted. And knowing that we had $40,000 in the Pooch Park design budget to use that and if we needed more than that, that we were able to access part of the design funds from the outdoor fitness center. So my understanding is that authorization is the $29,000 and the 600 because that's the amount that we're short because of the cost being $69,600. We certainly can utilize the $40,000 first out of the Pooch Park and as of now, I don't believe I have any authority to use anymore because it was limited to using the outdoor fitness park funds to complete that scope of work.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
You have a question on that?
On the Pooch, well.
I was going to.
Go ahead, do you want to say something about?
Yeah.
Okay. I just have a question on the way that this money is going to be spent. Is it, are we spending to do the design for the, I guess, for the existing park to take care of that first and then doing the second dog park? Are we doing these both simultaneously? Is that what we're approving tonight?
Councilmember Rains, I believe the consultant will be working concurrently on both projects.
So here's my understanding and I welcome clarification or not. And there's been a lot of talk in the community, we have some speakers on it tonight, I want to make sure that we're giving deference to everyone who's expressing opinion and I appreciate that. My understanding is that we have, well, it's not understanding, we have an existing dog park, we have a consensus that it is, whatever we think about dog parks, that is not a good one and it needs help or it needs to be eliminated. My preference would be that it received the help and the proper treatment that it have and we spend untold millions of dollars on other types of parks that have grand benefit for the neighborhoods that they're in and for the benefits that they provide and we have just general parks and walking paths and 80 miles of trail and all sorts of things that are amenities for the city. But our dog park is not indeed a park, it's in grand need of repair. So if we're going to do this design, I think it's critical that we start there. We don't necessarily, and no one is saying right now that we would ever need a second dog park, but we definitely need to figure out what's up with the one that we have. If the design review comes back and says, that's not going to work there, that you need more land or you need less land or you need a different configuration or whatever it might be, then, and only then, would we then look for an alternative site that would say, here's another park in town that we could, you know, make use of or here's an acquisition of land or whatever it might be. And so I think that is more important because certainly the public opinions that have been expressed here and online and elsewhere that we received, want to make sure that we're not double tracking the design and development of two parks when indeed the second one might not ever be needed. So as long as we're clear, and I don't know if we are, that's where my position has always been and I'm not trying to change it tonight. So unless there's anyone who disagrees with that, I'll.
I don't disagree with that, but I wonder if that's actually what this contract is for because the contract is that they're doing both at the same time and that's why we are realizing a savings.
Well, and that's fine. I don't mind realizing savings if indeed they can do the work and compress it in some way, but I don't want there to be, maybe a perception is the best way, but the thing I'm trying to avoid is I don't want there to be a perception that we are developing two dog parks because indeed the second one may not ever come. We are trying to do just one and if the need comes that we can get the benefit of that and somehow leverage it and a second one comes in, that's what the design review process, I guess, is for. So we get the savings, but I just don't want to get ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, but I think the savings is because we're doing both at the same time. We're doing two projects.
Yeah, I'm not trying to change the scope of the work, I'm trying to change the, the public perception about what we're trying to do here. So we, I mean, unless I'm wrong, and you can tell me if I am, if, if, if the first park can be reconfigured in a way that is acceptable to this council, there never would be a second park unless we have some other desire by the council to do that. And there might be for all I know, but as I stand here, we definitely know that we have a park that's in need of attention that is way far behind all the other parks in town and we need to fix it. And so that design review can happen. At the same time, they appear to be analyzing options for either a second park or an alternative park in the event that the first park is insufficient. Is that correct?
Well, thank you for that clarification. That does shed a new light in my understanding of what it was. So I believe that we were moving forward with the design concept and the construction estimate for the renovations to Pooch Park, which has been in the works for a while and we clearly already have a wish list from the community that's already been engaged to date on the different things that they want in there. Then I believe that concurrently, we were also having the same consultant do a needs assessment to see if a second dog park is even warranted. How we can incorporate what your concerns are is certainly with, there's community input on both of the scopes of the projects. We can certainly incorporate in when they're doing the needs assessment for. We can certainly incorporate in when they're doing the needs assessment for a second dog park, that if renovations were done to the existing dog park, do you believe the city still needs a second dog park? We can incorporate that given this new information if you find that acceptable.
Well, I think it is. And I mean, the the truth is, is I I was expecting the needs or will expect the needs assessment to show us the usage of the current park, the potential usage if it was a larger park or if it was a different park. And we can evaluate whether or not we want to spend any CIP funds or any funds on the existing dog park because it might not be worth it. It might be better to spend those funds building a different park in a different location. But it may well come back, and we'll find out from the analysis if that that is an appropriate park and we can do something there. Or you may end up getting two for the price of one somehow, and we'll just see where the analysis comes out. But I I I've been misquoted several times, and I guess I'm overly sensitive about this. I'm not trying to create two dog parks in the city of Laguna Nigal. We have one inferior dog park, which either must be fixed, or it needs a replacement. And if we can analyze the options on both of those at the same time, then so be it. Now, with respect to the money, I I we have received pushback, and we got some tonight, and I received some online about the dollars associated with this analysis. And having been around the Parks and Recreation Committee for a while, I now know, and it wasn't surprising, these things are expensive, and the consultants are always expensive. You can't just put a fence around a field and call it a park and have that happen. We have a much larger obligation to the city. And we do this on almost every park that we have. So this is not unique to dogs or anything else. It's a cost that we have to bear. And I don't think there's any real disagreement as to the need for that cost, but there's certainly been a public perception that it's somehow too much or different. And I actually find it to be very much in keeping with the other with the other expenses we've done on other types of parks in town, playgrounds and other things. And I'm I'm sure there's some comments. Councilman Metagar was waving.
Thank you. I I do concur with your assessment. I was under the impression that, and I do recall that vividly from the last discussions that we had when this item came up, that the purpose of the study would be a feasibility assessment from engineering perspective to see if there is a need for a second dog park. If there is no need for it, why should we be allocating spending public, you know, money? So I'm with you, and I totally agree with your assessment.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Davies.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm glad that those intentions were clear because that's what we had discussed in the beginning. And I just want to make a couple of things clear as you have. We're not taking two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to put towards a dog park, number one. Again, we will not be looking to, you know, have two dog parks if this first one, and we're hoping that this first one, we actually, we can, you know, renovate it up to the standards that are needed there. That's what we're going to do. We're always been good stewards of the money, and we're going to stay that way. Also, you know, I I I appreciate again Facebook. I think it's great. It's an opportunity for us to be able to hear the residents, and I appreciate those that came out there. I also looked at that. I want to get the other side of those that weren't here. So just a couple of comments as well that actually were positive on this as well. I think all residents can agree that we need a new and improved dog park, whether the current is renovated and improved or a new one is created. Thanks. Yes, I would like a Laguna Nigal dog park with the things that make a dog park a place people with dogs want to go. There are many reasons the current one is not utilized as the responses to previous posting points. Finally, the city is addressing the dog park issue. They have put it off far too long. Hopefully, this study will address the basic requirements of a decent dog park and find a location that people can walk their dogs instead of driving. I completely agree with this. I go down to Mission Viejo Dog Park all the time. It's a beautiful facility, and I'd love to be able to come to my neighborhood. I can tell you that dog parks are for all ages as well. I find that when I go there, a lot of the conversations I have are with seniors. There's a big group of seniors that go there. Those that actually aren't mobile can't walk their dogs around the park. Things like that where they can come in, they can let their dogs play, they can sit down on a bench and actually socialize. I've actually made a lot of friends that way. And, you know, so I think you have to look at this. The dog parks are also for all ages. And it gives you, you know, the opportunity to put something new and do it the right way in Laguna Nigal. So I appreciate it. And yes, I'm glad we had an opportunity that we're looking to improve the the existing dog park. And if that can't be, they remove. But one dog park, I think, is going to be it. And if we find that it's, you know, going to be completely packed because we're doing it the right way, then you look down at the other, you know, the other route. But Mission Viejo right now is having a problem because people from other cities, such as myself, are going to their dog park and utilizing it because it is such a good dog park. You know what? I want to make it that we can come here and do that as well. But we will always be good stewards of your money and do it the right way. Thank you.
Sorry, Mission Viejo is actually considering trying to find land for a second dog park because the utilization of the current one they have was so overwhelming that they're running out of space. So I know that Councilwoman Jenaway had a question for clarification.
Yeah, I have a question for clarification. And it's the way I read the report, and maybe I read it incorrectly, but it seemed like this was that they were going to do both at the same time. And the way this conversation on the dais has seemed to have gone is that they would do look at the the existing dog park and see if they can bring it up to what are the standards of Laguna Nigal. And if not, then do the second part of the project, which would be looking at the feasibility for a second dog park. But that's not the way I read this report. So we would be spending money on both projects at the same time. It's not one, and if the second one is needed, then we go ahead with the second one. So could I have some clarification, please?
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Jenaway, for your question. And good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. When I issued the RFP, I set it up so that there was a separate fee for each of the scopes of work that we've been talking about. The first one is looking at the existing Pooch Park and how we can approve it. The second one, looking at is there a potential or a need for a second dog park somewhere in the city? When the fee proposals came back in, and I combed through them all, it was very evident that there was a lot of duplication of meetings, a lot of duplication of effort for community inputs. So I met with a selected consultant who did come out as the preferred consultant for this work. And I said, if we want to do them at the same time, if that's the choice, how can we save some additional money by taking advantage of joint meetings, by taking advantage of streamlined reviews of both projects at the same time? And they were able to offer that selection, and the recommendation in the report will allow the council to realize those savings if that's the desire of the council to do them concurrently. If not, there's a separate fee for each one, and it's a little bit higher. And the additional cost is the six-thousand-eight-hundred that's outlined in here.
Yeah, and I I and I'm starting to get my head around the the distinctions here. The I I think the difference is not in the work to be done, but the output of our decision after that. And what I mean by that, you said, do the first park and then go into design review for a second park. And I and I would only tweak that a little bit to say that it's a second or different park because we may not end up with two. I still want all this work to be done, and the cost associated is giving us the cost savings. But we're not going into this process necessarily with the idea that we're going to end up at the end of that with two different parks. We can make a decision at that point about whether or not we should ultimately go spend that money. But before I go spend a whole bunch of money on one park or even more money on two, I think it's very important for us to have that information in hand and make that decision at that time. So I'm not trying to change the scope of the RFP work. I just want to make sure that we're clear on the outputs of where, you know, the, I guess, the public perception about what we're trying to do here. Because it may well be that that the cost savings comes back and says that for X amount of dollars, you can you can actually have two parks, and you need that because there's utilization requirement, or we expect there to be a higher demand or something like that. And we can evaluate that at that time. Is that Councilwoman Rains?
So dog parks in general, when you look around, they're more of a regional thing. People do drive to different parks to socialize with different people. So just in and of itself, saying that we're going to have a park here doesn't necessarily mean that people who live in Laguna Nigal are only going to Laguna Nigal. They're going to go to other parks. They are a great socialization, especially for immobile seniors. It gives them an opportunity to do that. And I'm a hundred percent in favor of us having a dog park in Laguna Nigal. What I'm looking at here is we're talking about spending thirty-eight thousand dollars on a feasibility study for a second dog park that we may or may not do. So my question is, yeah, we're not going to spend a whole bunch of money on a second dog park, but why are we even spending thirty-eight thousand dollars for the option to have it if we're not going to do it when we have a dog park that we can spend the money on and take care of if it works? And then if that doesn't work, then we can move to the other option. I I just feel like, yeah, we're saving six thousand dollars, but what if we end up not needing a second dog park? Now we've spent thirty-eight thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars. And I think that's the concern that the residents who have reached out to us have. And that makes me pause for a moment and think that maybe we we don't do both concurrently. I understand there's a savings, but there's a larger thirty-eight thousand is much more of a savings than sixty-five hundred. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, and the question would then be, we don't know what's possible until we find out. And and there seems to be a need. So that I guess that's where the second the second theory came from. I don't I don't know. And my my impression is is that the costs associated with that are not out of line for design plans and feasibilities on just parks in general. In fact, I was, it's it's a big number. I don't mean to make light of it, but in but before you spend a million building a park, it's very good to spend a very small portion of that million looking to see if it's feasible, where it should go, and why it should be there, and what the demands are. And that, if I understand correctly, that's what it is. More questions, Councilwoman Jenaway?
Yeah, but we could also just approve Project One, correct? We don't need to approve Project One and Two. We can just approve the first project and then see what the outcome of that is, and then take action from there.
We certainly could. Councilman Metagar, anything else?
Um, I have no comments.
All right, anything else? Is there a is there a motion to approve the agenda item as drafted?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
In regards to Project One, do we have a time on that?
Yes, I do, Councilmember Davies. The timeline is about three months. It's a little bit shorter than if you do both projects concurrently.
And and what is the timeline if we do both?
About four months.
You know, I'm I'm going to step up here, and I and I I'm going to actually make a substitute motion that we do just Project One first. I think Project Two is always there. If we can get three months, we can find out that, you know what, this is feasible. We can make the difference there. Great. If we can't, then we'll move on to the next one. And if it's six thousand more, it's six thousand more. But I think that we probably in the perspective, in the perception of the residents in here, I think that's probably the best thing to do. To me, it's still win-win. We'll get to do the first project, which we already have a park. And if we find it doesn't exist and doesn't work, then we'll move on to the next one.
I think that's fine. I'll second that. So you got
Oh, I second. Well, you can second it. It's okay.
Already did. Sorry. Any other comments before we vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. All right. Thanks, everyone, for the robust dog input.
I wanted to throw you a bone.
Ah, well done.
Ooh.
So much better.
I had to. I got one.
You did. Okay, the moment you've all been waiting for is is City Manager Item Number Two, last but least. The which is the a proposal to adopt Resolution Twenty-Nineteen Twelve Eighty-One relating to the Orange County Housing Trust. I believe City Manager Ridge has a staff report.
I do, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. This item before you is for your consideration to adopt a resolution that would make the city a participant in the Orange County Housing Finance Trust through the execution of a joint powers agreement. I've prepared just a few slides, not too many of them. And I have been very fortunate. As as Mayor Protem Davies had mentioned, I was selected to be on the working group that helped create the vision, the mission, and the potential bylaws. And then later was also brought in to question some of the the terms of the JPA agreement that was primarily completed by the General Counsel of the County of Orange. So I'm now going to take full credit for this presentation. I did steal some of the materials from ACC OC. Their executive director, Dave Kiff, had put one together. But I I made some edits, and I I shortened it. So starting out first, you know, what is a housing trust? And housing trusts are, it's simply a vehicle that's
Before you before you go on, I just want to make sure that none of our monitors are receiving what you're seeing. And the the overhead monitors out as well. No, we're not. We can turn around like we're sitting in the front row of an IMAX theater and look straight up if you want.
I can probably describe it so you don't you don't need to look at it.
You can start. Go ahead, please.
Okay, so basically, the question, you know, what is a housing trust? It's merely a vehicle. To accumulate money for the construction of housing, it's typically formed by governmental entities, and the the standard form is in the form of a joint powers authority agreement. Trust can receive funding from a number of sources, but mainly its state and federal grants, as well as housing bonds that have been issued. Right now, there's over seven hundred in existence in the United States of housing trust. The Orange County Housing Finance Trust, it was signed into law in September of twenty eighteen. It did have bipartisan support. And it was AB Four-Four-Eight, as Mayor Protem Davies had mentioned earlier. And what it allows for, it is allows, it allows the trust to be governed by a board of elected officials. It allows the trust to receive public and private money. And its purpose is to fund planning and construction of housing, primarily housing to serve homeless individuals that require permanent supportive housing and extremely low-income housing. It also, the law does provide that the the squeaking is very irritating. Okay, the law also provides for the trust to issue debt. And we're going to talk about that a little more later. What the law does not allow is the trust does not regulate land use. The trust does not own or operate any housing projects. It doesn't levy any type of a local fee, and it doesn't require inclusionary zoning for any city. Major issues and questions that came up as we were working on this topic, these are the primarily the five things that seem to have concern created by the Orange County City Managers Association, as well as some of the other elected officials that were working in this working group as well. And the first one was the issuance of debt. So AB Four-Four-Eight does allow the trust to issue debt. However, because it was a concern of the participants, was that going to be a debt that would extend to the individual cities? And there was a lot of discussion in that area. So as a result, the current draft of the JPA, which is attached to your staff report, does not provide the trust the ability to issue debt. It can, at a later date, by the governing board, change the terms of that JPA agreement and allow for the issuance of debt. The hiring of staff, that was another issue that was discussed at great lengths. And it was primarily related to a recent state law that makes the members of joint powers authority agreements responsible for any unfunded pension liability. So this topic was discussed at great lengths, and it's been fully addressed as well. So the trust will not have any actual employees of it. They will use contract staff and consultants to complete their work. The board makeup, this was another one of the challenges where I'm probably not a very popular city manager in some circles right now. One of the concerns from the city managers was we didn't want the County of Orange to have a controlling interest on that board. So as it is now, they are outnumbered by city representatives on the governing board. And then the popular question was, can my city leave the trust? And absolutely, there are provisions with six months' notice that any city can withdraw. It just requires city council action. And then do the cities have to contribute money? Very early on, when ACC OC was doing all the heavy lifting for this, there was talk about requiring the cities to dedicate their SB two dollars to this trust. And that was quickly abandoned. So there is not any funding commitment on behalf of the cities to become a member of the trust.
Can I ask you a quick question on that before you moved off that slide? Let's say that the the board ultimately decides they want to issue debt. And we have to give them six months to get off of the board. Are we allowed to leave without, I mean, because they could incur debt in the six months between we time we give notice? So if the if the if the issuance of debt was a prerequisite for us leaving that, I wouldn't want to have them make that vote and then leave and end up with debt during intervening six months. them make that vote and then leave and end up with debt during the intervening six months. Has that been provided for?
I, I believe it's probably highly unlikely that the board could go from discussing potential debt to issuing debt within a six-month window. So certainly, it would be a dialogue that the board would be having, and you would have ample time to withdraw from the trust.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
And so the two documents that are attached to the staff report are the proposed bylaws, but it's important to note, those aren't final, because the bylaws have to be approved by the governing board, which hasn't been determined yet, because the cities are all still in the process of considering whether they're going to be participants, with the exception of three cities that have already joined and the County of Orange. So the bylaws really go into a lot of detail in the, the structure and the vision and the mission, and it calls out the structure of that governing board. So there's four county elects, and that's intended to be two members from the Board of Supervisors, and then two elected county officials. So for example, the sheriff would qualify for the seat for an elected county official. And then from the cities, there's five representing the cities. And the way that the bylaw breaks it down is that there will be an elected official from each of the largest cities within the three service planning areas. And as you recall, that's part of the county. They've divided up the region into the North Central and the South SPA or Service Planning Area. So the largest city from each one of those, so that would be three city members on the board. And then, because we wanted to ensure that even mid-size and smaller cities had a seat at the table, the other two city representatives would be one from a medium-sized city, and at this time, it's defined in the bylaws with a population between 60,000 and 95,000, and one from a small city, and that would be a city defined as population less than 60,000. So. The other document is the joint powers agreement. This is a document that, it's final, it can't be amended. It is what those other entities that I just mentioned have already signed on to. So what is the trust going to do once it's formed? Well, the first thing they are, it is a little bit of a sense of an urgency, because there are some monies that are made available for housing trusts that have to compete for it. So they're very anxious to get regional dollars for building housing within our county. So as soon as there's enough members and it's up and running, the trust consultants, which at this time will be county employees, because the county has agreed to staff the trust for the first year of operation, so they can really hit the ground running. The county has also agreed to seed some money in the trust, so there is money available already. But they'll be seeking and applying for funds. They'll be putting a call out to the developers and let them know, hey, here is a vehicle where you can seek gap financing to do permanent supportive housing or extremely low housing. The trust consultants would review and recommend, and then ultimately, the, the governing board would call for the vote, and the projects would get funded. It's really important to note that no project would receive any gap financing within our city limits unless you were behind that developer in that particular project. You would need to go basically hand-in-hand to the trust to seek that financing for the, for the developer. Some of the reasons to join the trust is the, we all know the County of Orange deserves to be competitive and bring dollars to the region to tackle this housing solution problem that, to provide housing solutions for a problem that we know exists regionally in our county. And in other areas, we tend to get shortchanged in the County of Orange, so this would be a benefit for participating in the trusts. The participation also shows that our city recognizes that there is a housing shortage within our city. And then, as a participant, we're not going to lose any local control. We might not get a seat on the governing board, but we certainly have a seat at the table, and we can monitor how they are moving forward. And one of the, the items that was emphasized greatly in the guiding values and the vision was transparency for this trust, so that everybody knows what dollars they're receiving, what projects they're doing. Financial reporting and audit requirements are all included in there. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Great. Thank you very much, and I, I do appreciate all the efforts that you put in on this. Mission creep on organizations is best hedged at the very beginning, and I think a lot of the changes that, that have been put into this certainly allayed the concerns that I had. And I think there's some more discussions to be had around that. But it, it's not inconsequential that we had numerous discussions tonight and over the recent months about regional solutions and Laguna Niguel's involvement in those regional solutions and what we can do for that. And so that reason, I, I think that this housing trust is something that we should, that we should move forward on. All the protections that we've been needed have been baked into the recipe that we're being presented with tonight, and I think it's something that we can work with. Definitely would like to hear from other council members, if there are some. Mayor Protem Davies?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to thank City Manager Ridge. I can tell you that, knowing that she was on this board and being, you know, giving her advice, gave me a lot of confidence when it came to this. I think we all had concerns and questions, and there just weren't answers. And so a lot has been developed over the last few months. Again, I think also realizing that it does take two signatures. A developer cannot come into the city and just say, I'm going to build a housing project. It has to be a partnership, and if we don't sign it, it doesn't happen. So we are covered in that. Also, again, that was a, a main concern was that the county didn't have authority, that it was regional for all the cities, and that was put in there. And also, again, it was kind of a no-deal if we weren't able to do our own hiring, because we don't want to get into pensions and so forth like that. And in regards to when I was talking, really right now, the only cost would probably be staff costing. We don't have anything for the first year because the county's going to take it. But I think when there was discussion, hasn't been approved, it might be a percentage of the population your city has, kind of like we've done, just like when you're paying for the league and you're paying for the ACCOC dues. So I, I think this is great. It shows that we have potential. And there's a lot of cities out there that, they have the land, but they don't have the funding. And you can partnership, you know, we could partnership with one or two other cities and, and develop something. So, you know, we're aware of the housing problem, and to me, this is probably one of the most productive JPAs you could have, especially when it comes to this. I know that other cities throughout California are actually looking at this to see how this goes. And we're going to take our time on this. We understand we only have one chance to get it right. We're going to do baby steps, probably start with maybe one small project, see how that goes, and, and move forward. So you definitely have my support in this. I do know that a lot of the other cities have this on their agenda this week. And from what I'm hearing, that it will pretty much pass as well. So showing support at a regional level, I think, is important as well. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. Councilwoman Rains?
Well, we, we started off our meeting with homelessness, and then we're talking about a housing trust. So I think it's important to understand that we all are concerned about the, the housing shortage that we have. And this housing trust helps us to bring back some of the dollars that we're not getting here in Orange County, our federal and state dollars that can be used towards this housing. And this Housing Finance Trust provides us with that opportunity. So just that being said, and knowing that we still continue to have the local control of our individual cities, and knowing that the counties had money sitting in, in an account for a long time and not done very much with it, this really helps us come to the table and, and make things move forward for a positive thing. So, and I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, here, here. I completely concur with that. Thank you. Councilwoman Menegar?
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, City Manager Christine Ridge, for your participation and for your inputs on this. I think this is coming to us at a perfect time, when a lot of other cities are struggling with the same issue as we do. And as it was mentioned, yes, it is on, on the agenda of a couple of city councils, that I'm pretty sure that, like us, they would be moving forward with this kind of thing. I just have one quick question for you. In your research, do you know the difference between this and the Irvine Land Trust? That two council members happen to be a member of that?
No, Councilmember Menegar, I'm not familiar with the Irvine Land Trust. I know that OCBC has set up an additional housing trust and received a grant from Disney for $5 million, but I'm not aware of an Irvine one.
Councilmember Melissa Fox is a member of that, and constantly she sends me, you know, information. And I wanted to just ask you-
I can research that for you if you'd like more information on that.
Well, at this juncture, we are voting on this item, so I think, to save your time, there is no need for that. Thank you. So, that's all.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Jenning?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank City Manager Ridge for your leadership and your expertise on getting this to the, the form that it is now. I know there were a lot of robust discussions over many months, and also, at the start of this, with the ACCOC Legislative Committee. So we had a lot of input, a lot of questions, that this has really been refined. And I know one of my huge concerns was the pension liability that we may incur, and that has been addressed, as have many other issues. And it's important for Laguna Niguel to be at the table, to be a participant in the discussions. So I am, I am in favor of us moving forward with this, because I think this has been really examined under a microscope by not only those in our city, but also by many of our colleagues throughout the region. And I'm in support of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thanks. I, I think we may have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion move, please.
I think you have a second.
I'll second.
Ah, you're so close, you almost got it. I'll, I'll let you second it if you like. I'd already seconded. Yeah, go ahead. So move, move my bear Protem Davies, and seconded by Councilwoman Rains. Is there any further discussion before we vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, unanimous. And thank you, everyone, for your efforts on that. That concludes our discussion items. Let's move on to other business and council reports. And I will start to my left with Councilmember Menegar.
Quick, five items.
Oh, my. So we're going to start with Councilwoman Rains.
Well, the first one is, last week, I attended the, the Executive and Administrative Committee of SCAG to pick the new CEO for the Southern California Association of Governments out of 72 applicants from all over the US showing interest, because SCAG is the largest MPO in the country and the most powerful planning organization in the US with six counties and, you know, 191 cities. Until 10:00 PM at night, we were, we were debating, and finally, we, it was a unanimous vote that the current planning manager of SCAG was selected to be the new CEO. He was appointed by Governor Jerry Brown about two years ago to be the Chief Deputy Director of Caltrans, California Department of Transportation Sacramento. But beyond that, what he impressed all of us, and myself included, was the wealth of planning skillsets that he was bringing to the table. This area of Southern California needs a lot of new planning initiatives with the traffic congestion, with the housing issues, with Reno, and a lot of other pivotal, you know, and critical stakes that we have. In our opinion, he was the best. And then the next day, he went to the Regional Council, and it was a unanimous vote by 82 Regional Council members that voted for him to be the new SCAG CEO. I also attended a five-hour joint board meetings of TCA. It was the biggest in the history of the Transportation Corridor Agency last Thursday. I happened to be chairing that meeting. It was fun. I enjoyed that. So, so nothing else to say about that. More than 100 people showed up. At the end, everything is online, and everyone can go and see the discussions. I also attended the General Assembly of Orange County Council of Governments as a district director, District 12, representing cities of Aliso Viejo, Laguna Niguel, Laguna Bisteno Point, San Juan, and San Clemente. It was a good place to get to meet other decision-makers, other elected officials, corporate leaders, and community and civic leaders to talk about, you know, issues of vital interest to the County of Orange. Yesterday morning, I met with the developers of the county property at the City Hall, and the, we had a very good discussion. Obviously, we are moving forward with that, so that when they meet with all the council members, then ultimately, it is going to come to the City Council for a public hearing or public workshop first. And last but not least, this afternoon, I met with Congressman Harley Ruda, and along with me was my counterpart, Mayor Christina Shea of Irvine, to talk about transportation. Congressman Harley is a member of the Transportation Committee of the US Congress, and he was very receptive. He was very open to see what he can do for Orange County, and more specifically, for South Orange County, that happened to be his district, or the coastal areas. And we had a very good, dynamic discussions, and he's going back to DC. As you know, the federal government, or not the government, the US Congress is working on the infrastructure, transport, or transportation infrastructure bill. And Congressman Ruda wanted to hear from us about what are the sub-regional needs. And he also, I believe, he had a meeting at OCTA last Saturday. I missed it. I could not make it, that he brought along the chairman of the Transportation Committee from the US House of Representatives to come to Orange County to listen to us. So a lot of good things are happening, and I do advocate for what he's doing as our congressman, regardless of the party line, regardless of what we prefer to be. But, but I'm very pleased with the discussions that we had, and I look forward to hear more. And this Thursday, I'll be meeting with Congresswoman Katie Porter at her office. The discussions is going to be on the TCA. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Jenning?
Okay, as Councilmember Menegar mentioned, we've met with, or I've met with the proposed developers of the county courthouse property. Excited, providing lots of input to them also, on things that we'd like to see in our civic center. And we, on the eighth, we had the Military Support Committee meeting, and like to give a big shout out to Dennis and Donna Mulvaney. They've done it again. They managed to get this year 2,000 boxes of Girl Scout cookies donated by the generous residents of Laguna Niguel, and those all went to our adopted military troops. And they absolutely love it. When we talk to our troops, that reminds them of home, the Girl Scout cookies. So thank you to everybody who, when you saw a cute little brownie or Girl Scout, and instead of taking the cookies home and consuming the calories, you donated them for our troops. Thank you, because our troops absolutely love them. Last Tuesday was the Laguna Niguel Junior Civic Workshop graduation. So we had lots of celebrating to do. Electeds from different levels of our government came and spoke to the students, Sheriff Barnes, Supervisor Bartlett, our clerk recorder Hugh Nguyen, trustee McNicholas. My colleagues here on the council were scooping up ice cream for the kids, but it is, it was the culmination of their year-long study of what does city government do? And how does it, how does it benefit, and what does it do for you and your family here in Laguna Niguel? So we had a great year. We will start again in September, and that will be our fifth year of the Junior Civic Workshop. Tended the Medal of Valor luncheon, just in awe of our law enforcement. They do an incredible, incredible job. And then after that was the State of the County with Supervisor Bartlett in the evening. Thank you to Chief McDaniel for attending the April 12 SCAG meeting. Greatly appreciate your presence there and the message that you had to send, or that you sent to the members. This month, April 30th, is the deadline for the Laguna Niguel Citizen of the Year nomination. So the committee is taking nominations. Please think of those residents in our city whose volunteer efforts have made Laguna Niguel a better place for all of us to live and work. It can be acts within the last year or over a number of years. But those applications and nomination forms are available throughout the city and also on the city website. And the selection committee is all of the past recipients of the Laguna Niguel Citizen of the Year Award, and it'll be presented at the City Volunteer Dinner in May. And early congratulations to Mayor Protem Davies. Tomorrow evening, she will be installed as the President of the Association of California Cities, Orange County Chapter. So congratulations. And that is it, Mayor.
That's awesome. Great. I'd just like to point out, I did not scoop ice cream. I squirted whipped cream. So, just to make sure the record's clear. Councilwoman Rains?
Thank you, Mayor Jennings. Just want to remind everyone that on April 29th, there will be an Odyssey Sustainable Fair. This was one of our vendors at our College and Career Fair that we had last month. And the, the key thing to the Sustainable Fair is teaching and providing opportunities for young people to find a sustainable life. Not everyone's going to go to college, and this will give them an opportunity to explore other avenues of ways to continue to be sustainable, to have a sustainable life. So that's at Saddleback College on April 29th, from 9:30 to 1 o'clock. And then, on Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the- attend the Orange County Council of Governments All Day Workshop, and it was fascinating to see what our county and what our individual cities do, and what our public and private partnerships offer. I was really impressed with WasteNotOC.org. It's a public-private partnership that is taking food waste from restaurants and turning it into sustainable food that they can provide for people who are food insecure. And these may not be just people who are homeless, but people who are actually living in a home but aren't eating meals every day. So that was very impressive to hear how this whole organization has taken that, and knowing that if you can get food insecure people food, that they can spend the resources they have to stay in their homes. So that's a really great thing. The other thing that our county is really looking at doing is maintaining resilient infrastructure, whether it's with water or energy, and how we deliver energy, and how we deliver water. Our, I'm going to say, Orange Coast Sanitation District actually recycles our sewage and makes it drinkable, potable water. Isn't that amazing? So visualize that. But it's water that we're drinking, and it's great, because we're reusing the resources that we have. Finally, I was really impressed, I was really impressed with a program that Disney has, and Disney's made a lot of, you know, Disney Star Wars is opening up pretty soon, but you must have a reservation to go there on May 31. So just know that. You will not get in without one. But Aspire is a fabulous program that Disney puts on, where if you are a cast member at Disney and work there for 90 days, you can apply and go to college. They will pay for your tuition, and you continue to work at Disney. And the day upon your graduation, you have no other commitment to Disney. You can move on and go and work. I thought that was an amazing way for young people from all over Orange County to take advantage of free college education. So that was pretty impressive. And then my last thing, a couple of things that I want to finish up with is our Drug Take Back, National Drug Take Back, is on April 27. We'll be here at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And I know that our police services will be there along with, I think it's national. So you have DEA there, Lieutenant McGee? Yeah. Okay. So no questions asked. Just drop off your unused, unwanted prescription drugs, and they'll take them and dispose of them properly. And then I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity. I know you still have a couple of weeks, but I just wanted to say thank you so much, Christine Ridge. I know that in a couple of weeks, we'll be saying goodbye. But welcome, Robert Hall. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem Davies.
Thank you very much. Along with, I believe, everyone here, we had the opportunity to go to the South County State of the Address by Supervisor Bartlett. A lot of exciting things happening down here. Dana Point, the harbor, it's been years, but it's moving. And I'm excited to see how that moves forward. And I know it's a place that I love to visit as well. Of course, also, I was part of a meeting with, well, we all had a chance to actually meet with the developers for the land behind us separately. And I can't tell you how exciting it is to see this. And when you get a chance to see, they'll be doing a lot of community outreach. But when you get a chance to see what they're doing, I think you're going to be just as excited. It's going to be the addition we've been waiting for, for 30 years, and hopefully they'll start moving quickly. And again, I want to thank you, City Manager Ridge. You have been a blessing to the city. The things that you have accomplished within this time is incredible. You've put together incredible staff, those that have been here, as well as the new ones. We sadly see you go, but we also understand that, you know what, I think that they're lucky to have you. As I said to the mayor of Santa Ana, I gave him a list and put 1, 2, 3, and he said, what's that? I said, those are the three things you're going to owe me. And I gave him two, and I won't say what they are, but-
We're going to need a longer list.
But the third one, I said, I still haven't decided yet. So anyways, we're so grateful for the time we've had with you. Much success. And if you ever want to come back, where it's quiet, feel free to. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And I don't think that left almost anything that I didn't go through that you all didn't say. But let me start with just a word of condolences to the people of France. And I sent an email out to the mayor of Paris, which I'm sure is being prioritized as we speak, just to say that we were sorry for the instance that went there. That is truly not only a French landmark, but it's a global landmark, and something that the people of the world have enjoyed for literally 1,000 years. And so I just want to let them know that we were thinking of them. I also wanted to say congratulations again to Bob Hall, Robert Hall, for coming on board. That's, you know, we're lucky to have you, and we're looking forward to all that you can do for us. And I know our staff is excited to see what comes in. You've got big shoes to fill momentarily, but all in good time, and we'll get that worked out. A very large prop to Parks and Recreation for a wonderful bunny bonanza over the weekend. I saw no blasting of bunnies whatsoever, so it was all bonanzing bunnies. So we had, I'm sure you might tell us the numbers, but it seemed like a very large turnout, and it was very well received. And I saw a lot of smiling, happy people there. And it was just a great day, and I think one of my favorite ones so far, though. So it was great. Like everyone else, I met with the developers for the city center project here. The only thing I would add to this is our commitment to an aggressive timeline. And I shared on several occasions with Lisa Bartlett, our supervisor, and fortunately for us this year, the Chair of that Board of Supervisors, since we need this expedited, is that this timeline has to stay consistent, has to be fast. I told her, I want something by the end of the year. We're going to throw a shovel in the dirt, and that's going to be started. And she's committed to me that she's going to expedite that through their process. And I told her, we would try to do it weekend here at the city, to do the same thing. But to those that were concerned that we weren't on top of it, please allay your concerns, because we've got this, and we're moving very quickly. And I think it's going to be fantastic, and what I've seen so far, I'm very happy to see. The only last thing I will end with is an extraordinarily happy wish for everyone for a blessed Easter and a happy Passover. This is a big week for a lot of families, and I want to wish you well as we go out. So let's go around the room. Chief McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would just like to thank City Manager Ridge. Extremely calm, extremely knowledgeable. Every time we had a stressful situation, she always had direction for us, and delivered that in a calm way. And I just genuinely appreciate all of that that you've done for us. And that's all I have.
Great, thanks. Finance Director Erlinson. Great, thank you. City Attorney Ennis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Three matters involving cannabis, just to update you a little bit on the controversy regarding cannabis deliveries. The consolidated case of City of Santa Cruz versus Bureau of Cannabis Control. This is the case which has been brought by about 20 cities in California. That has been filed as of April 3. There's a bill that would have allowed cities to directly ban cannabis deliveries. That was Assembly Bill 1530. That has failed in committee. And lastly, there's Assembly Bill 1356. This will be heard in committee on April 23, and it would require local jurisdictions that had more than 50% of its electorate vote in favor of Prop 64, to issue a minimum number of local licenses. So we will be looking carefully at what the voters here in this community did to see if we are within or outside that particular bill. And then lastly, I would also like to thank Christine Ridge for the warm and cooperative and collaborative working relationship that we've developed over these short, approximately four months. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I think we should stay in session and just wait for the Orange County Fire Authority to give us its report. But alas, I think that would be a bit futile. So we'll move on. Community Development Director O'Dunia.
I'd just also like to thank City Manager Ridge for your support, for your guidance, your leadership, and congratulations as you take the reins with our county seat.
Great, thank you. Deputy City Clerk Wannalaur. Welcome to the council meeting, by the way.
It was a pleasure. Anytime.
Great, thank you.
I also want to offer the perspective of the employees. We're very grateful for Christine's leadership, and you're going to be sorely missed. And so, good luck.
That's great. Thank you so much. Parks and Recreation Director Giglio.
Thank you, Mayor. The city is accepting applications for the youth committee until April 26. You're invited to celebrate the skate park's 16th anniversary at the Blue Gates Best Trick Event on April 27, from 12 to 4. We're going to have trick contests, games, food, prizes, and giveaways at that. And registration for summer camps opens on May 1. So register at cityoflagunanigel.org, or stop by one of our rec facilities. I would also like to thank Christine Ridge. Honestly, I think you came in here and shined a bright light during a challenging transition, and I thank you for your support and your leadership, and wish you the best of luck in Santa Ana. They're lucky to have you. And I'll look forward to seeing everyone at Earth Day this Saturday. And I encourage everyone to find other transportation besides cars. Do your part to save the earth, because we don't have that much parking. Thank you.
Great. Deputy City Manager Bell.
I just wanted to say that I'm grateful that Christine has been here with us for the time that she's been here. She's done an amazing job, and I wish her the best in her rest of her career, or at least her next challenge in Santa Ana.
That's awesome. Thank you. Public Works Director Jackie Scott.
Congratulations, Christine. We're all cheering for you, and I have nothing further this evening.
Great. Thank you for everything tonight. City Manager Christine Ridge.
Okay, just a-
One last time, by the way.
A couple of items. The first one, I did want to let you know that I attended the John Wayne Airport Town Hall on April 6, on Saturday, and it was hosted by Supervisor Steele and the mayor of Newport Beach. There was a lot of people in attendance. They overflowed their community room and had chairs set up outside, and then they even had a secondary room that was open for the overflow. There was no speakers or presentation provided by anybody that was from the FAA, and the entire focus of it was on the general improvement plan that the John Wayne Airport had recently revealed, and the comment period was over. But it was mainly talking about improvements that the airport wants to put into general aviation facilities at the airport. There were a number of speakers that did express their frustration with the Next Gen and the concentration of flight paths causing noises to be louder at their particular residence. But it was not an issue that was really addressed at that forum. And then last, I don't want to get emotional, because I'm not an emotional person, but this is my last meeting, as you know. And I just want to express that it has been a real honor to serve as your city manager, and I'm grateful for you providing that opportunity for me. And I'm going to miss all of you. I've got to know each of you individually and collectively, and this city is in fantastic hands, under your leadership, and with this fabulous executive team. There is much more greatness in the future of Laguna Niguel. And I do believe things happen for a reason, and I know that our paths are going to cross in the future, and I look forward to working with you on regional issues. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And you may have noticed I skipped over my thank yous in the comments, and that was not accidental. It has indeed been only a year, but my goodness, what a year. You know, as I look around the room, the transformation of senior staff, the books that we've had, our council policies are different, really almost everything that we do from an operational standpoint has been improved in the last year. And I know that if I asked you, you would immediately direct that to your senior staff and the people that did the hard work, and rightfully so. But it also took a good leader, and I wanted to say, on behalf of all of us, and I don't just mean the council, all 67,000 of us here in Laguna Niguel, thank you. We appreciate all that you did. And you are indeed our emissary to Santa Ana and the county of Orange. That's an uncompensated position, but it's one that we assume that you will take and take with us. I have a bit of an off agenda, something I want to do for just a moment. If I could, I'd like to ask my council colleagues to join me in the well. And Christine, if you would, join us as well. Yeah, we're not going to christen a ship tonight, although the thought had occurred to me, to kind of think that. Yeah, I just wanted to present you with something that said thank you. And champagne's something that we use to celebrate and to remember things. And I hope when you open this and you enjoy it on behalf of all of us, that you do both of those things. So thank you very much, and thank you for all that you've done for us. So thank you. And we still get two more weeks out of our, yay. No, we got to get a picture, so. Great, thank you. Oh, 16 months. Okay, well, no wonder it seemed like longer than a year. Okay, with that, we are done, and we are adjourned at 9:41 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.